Can you all hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I have YouTube.
I have YouTube.
Hey, Dan.
Hey, Dan.
Can y'all hear us in here?
Yes.
Yes. My screen shows that we're live on YouTube.
Yes.
You did play six thirty-five, didn't you, Chris?
Or six forty, I think, was what the mayor said at the end.
The attendees are joining back in as well.
Mayor, is that a fan over your head or swarm of bees?
Yes, that's the last thing I'm expected to see is a swarm of bees. Is that distracting?
No.
Looks like it's cutting my head, but that might be helpful.
I think we're still waiting on David.
I didn't know you wore glasses.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, these are readers.
It looks like the windshield off of Forty Ford.
Yeah, no. I wanted some unbreakable ones, so they got me some of these anti-aircraft kind. I think they're supposed to be explosion-proof. I've sat on or stepped on or leaned on about thirty pair. So they finally got me a pair that's virtually indestructible.
My apologies, everyone. I have another machine now that I have to replace in the council chamber.
I'm wondering if we might be able to resume in-person meetings where we just have the council at the dais. There's with the critical staff, we would have less than ten people in the room. We could probably set it up so that we have six feet between us, mostly facing the same way. I think there's something to be said for the live interaction. Maybe y'all could check that out for next week.
We talked earlier today about bringing that up at the end of the meeting.
Could we do that at the art center somewhere like that? It would be hard to set up the equipment, though, wouldn't it?
I think that our room is bigger than the county commissioner's chamber, and there's the same number of us. We could spread out appropriately.
We could block off chairs in here so everybody was distanced.
We could still bring in speakers remotely if we need to do that for safety.
So Kirk, it looks like everything's and everybody's back on. Are we ready to go?
We're ready to go.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, we will resume where we were. Stephanie?
Mm-hmm. Um, Mr. Gaskin was in the middle of his comments. I'm not sure.
Is he back with us?
He's back or not, let's see.
He is.
Okay.
If he'd like to start over, that's where we're streaming, whatever he wants to do.
Um, I'll briefly start over. I'll make it brief, just to kind of recap where I was. First, my name is Jason Gaskin, United Methodist pastor, planning a new church here in Meben in Alamance, Alamance County. And I was just speaking that I've tried to this first year meet as many people as I could and intentionally met as many diverse voices in this community. And one of those voices was Tommy Jones. And Tommy Jones came to the council in a public hearing in August. And his recommendation is that the council take seriously in having an advisory committee made up of the diversity that makes up people of color that make up Meben. And I'm just here as a pastor, as a hope, a leader of the community to strongly urge that the council take that recommendation from Tommy seriously. When I see Tommy, I see him as a pillar of the community. If Tommy Jones works at Lowe's Foods at the bar there. And as I've met people through Tommy, I've just heard, especially from African-American people and Latino people, really desiring for a voice at the table. And I think it's very vital that that happens so that we have feedback for what people in our community are feeling and how they're feeling they're being represented. My fear is that people of color have checked out and don't feel like their voice is being represented. And I think that this move would be a work of, a move of courage to see that the city council is taking the voices and the diversity of Meben very seriously. And so just to leave it at that, you know, I'm open and willing to do whatever I can as a pastor, as leader in the community, to support people like Tommy Jones and to see something like this to move forward. And so thank you for your time and would welcome any further conversation. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
And next we have Christian Solis.
Hello?
Hi. Go ahead.
Hey, um, my name is Christian Solis. Thanks for letting me be here on short notice. Um, I'm one of the affected property owners on the proposed Greenway. I live at the end of Vance Street. I'm trying to go fast because I was told to be under three minutes, which that's fine. Anyways, I like to start off by saying, you know, it's very hard to get to this meeting. I mean, it was like pulling teeth. Virtual process is just, it's very painful. I've tuned into several of these and all of them have just been, it's painful. I think, I think, you know, like one of the other members that just mentioned, maybe we could start, you know, trying to do some more indoor meetings. You know, especially, you know, right down the road. My brother lives right down the road and he can't even get good enough service, internet service to stream anything anyway. You know, I've seen a bunch of like, like how you do the Zoom calls, everybody can tune in. I mean, you guys can mute everybody anyway. So if we are going to do the virtual, maybe we can stop using YouTube and just use Zoom. Um, I noticed that while the stream was down for the first twenty minutes, nobody even noticed until I said something. And, you know, there were twenty-four people who wanted to watch the meeting. And it's already down, it was down to like three. You know, it's just kind of frustrating. I mean, you know, also, I mean, I mean, there's, there's two people right now who are even in this meeting, on this virtual meeting, but they're actually in the same room. No mask, you know, I mean, I mean, side by side essentially. And again, anyways, so that being said, even though this may once again fall on deaf ears, I come here today after being fed up with the proposed Greenway. It's been about two years. I've spoken to several people. In particular, Chris Rollins, Si Stover. Today, I actually had a good conversation today with Mr. Sean. And, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of frustrating when you continue to read in the Meven enterprise, you know, about these, you know, communications and this and that. And you, you got to go through the enterprise because, you know, you don't, you don't hear anything from anybody else, you know, until they want to offer you some, some money for your land. You know, I mean, they, I hear about the construction being reported in the, in the paper. You know, it's beginning to fall, but, you know, we're just now, I mean, recently receiving low offers. I mean, I mean, during a pandemic, you know, it's just, it's just kind of, it's shameful at best to me. You know, I talked, I talked to Chris a couple of years ago. And, you know, he told me, oh, you're going to come to your home and pet your dog, sit at a table and have a talk, you know, and it just never happened. Two years ago, it just never happened. And I never heard a word. You know, the last, the next thing I heard was a W nine packet, you know, in the mail, you know, telling me, oh, yeah, hey, let's, let's buy your property for, I mean, cheap, cheap. It just is insulting. You know, I just feel like maybe, maybe with more representation, you know, maybe we can fix, you know, these problems in our area, you know, instead of adding more problems, you know? How would any of you guys feel if, you know, somebody, somebody wanted to put just a sidewalk right in your backyard or a big road in your backyard? I mean, there's a reason why you guys are coming to this area, not, you know, not right behind Mill Creek or anything. It just, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, you guys could, we could clearly just fix the road, fix our sidewalks, you know, invest in our community instead of putting something behind our community and taking up, you know, what, what me and my neighbors have paid for. It just, I mean, please. I mean, this, it doesn't, this isn't going to benefit us. It's going to benefit people who are already benefited by the community. It just, again, it just does not make sense. You know, if you want to help the community, you know, again, just take some of these condemned and falling down buildings. It would be nice, you know, to not see, you know, buildings that, that, that are just beyond repair. And I just feel like the city isn't, isn't in favor of figuring out a way to utilize existing streets and sidewalks, make these necessary connections because they don't want everybody else to see where the city has failed. And, and you fill our community. And it's unfortunate, but don't go behind our community and try to take other people's property. I'm just not, you know, we say we're positively charming. We got to be positively charming, you know? I just say do better, build better. Find a way to utilize the existing streets, make better sidewalks. This is, this is a chance to improve this community. Make it positively charming. Thank you. God bless.
Good. Thank you very much. We actually let you speak longer, so that's, that's good. Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
I don't know how to meet. It appears that the first part of our meeting was really not on YouTube is what we're hearing. So I'm not sure that any of our public comments were really on YouTube. Lawson, do you think we need to reach back out to those folks?
Do we have a recording of it?
So we do have a recording. My understanding is through Zoom. Zoom is recording it. So we could make that, I believe, a part of the YouTube video on the backend, possibly. I have to talk to Kirk. I don't know. Kirk, are you here?
We can do that, Chris.
So I think if the public comments were played at our next continued meeting on Wednesday evening, then that would satisfy the statutory requirement that the public comment be made in public and heard by the public.
Everybody that was on the Zoom call heard it, but it was not on YouTube. So we can tomorrow pull that section of the meeting from the Zoom call and replay that during Wednesday night's meeting at the beginning and just add the public comments back into that portion of the meeting.
Okay.
Understand that, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Stephanie, who's next?
I actually just have one more, and it's a written comment that was submitted by Izaray Reyes. And it says, this is Izaray's of Mevenite, and I believe Meven would absolutely benefit from a diversity council. Race and ethnicity affects every aspect of life, from hiring to housing to policing. And the city would absolutely benefit from having a diversity council to address city policies and trainings so that the city truly is positively charming for all residents. I hope all the council members support having a diversity council going forward. And that includes the public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, to make comments tonight. We'll fix those for our Wednesday night meeting. The next item on agenda was the bike and ped plan update. And that's been, that's going to be continued to next month. But we do have Si Stover with an announcement that we've been, been waiting for. Si?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So I'm very happy to announce that the North Carolina Main Street program that the city of Meven was selected for is going to be having their kickoff meeting for the city's program on Friday, September 25th at eight thirty a.m. And it is an open meeting to the public. It will be held via Zoom similar to this one and will be streamed on YouTube. The meeting really will be hosted by Department of Commerce staff, Main Street program staff from North Carolina Main Street. The city will be hosting the program. And it essentially will be focused on the meat and potatoes of Main Street. What is it? And what can it do for the city of Meven? There are four pillars of the Main Street program that they'll be speaking of. They'll be talking about the work plan that the city is expected to develop over the coming year. They'll talk about the board that needs to be appointed. And, and, you know, the type of diversity that the board will need to have, both in terms of perspective as well as skills and background to make sure that we have a well-rounded board that can benefit the city as well as the different work groups that will work on behalf of the program to bring those four pillars into a solid foundation for our downtown as well as for the city and moving the program forward. With that, I believe the city will have some comments and an introduction that we'll be making at the top of the meeting. And the flyer that will be distributed and posted on Facebook tomorrow. And on the Community Spotlight has information. If anyone wants to participate in the programs, particularly in a speaking manner, they will need to get in touch with myself for pre-registration, similar to a council meeting. But the meeting is open to the public for viewing. And of course, it is an open meeting that folks are allowed to participate in. And we hope that people will. We'll be distributing this to the downtown community first thing tomorrow morning to make sure all those property owners and everyone who participated in our downtown vision plan have the first opportunity to sign up to participate in the meeting. But we invite members of the public who are interested or who maybe weren't part of that planning effort a couple of years ago to be a part of the Main Street program as we kick it off Friday, September 25th.
Good deal. Thank you, Si. I have a question. And you said, we're going, we're going door by door to door or store by store in announcing this hearing so that everybody downtown will hear. in announcing this uh, hearing so that everybody downtown will hear uh, that we're having this Zoom meeting, correct?
Well, uh, sir, we have a committee that uh, signed up as part of the downtown vision plan. Um, we'll be circulating that to them and then working with uh, the um, uh, Meven Merchants Association and Destination Downtown council members. Um, yes, the intention is to get, make sure every property owner in our downtown region between the city park and uh, the loss of white furniture have the opportunity to participate in this, in this Main Street program one way or the other. Um, and we will do our best to make sure all of those folks know about this and uh, feel that the door is open to them to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Stover, uh, do you have, have we hired the downtown coordinator yet, the part-time position?
Uh, no, sir.
Do you know when that will be advertised?
Uh, I'm really waiting for the kickoff meeting to, uh, we're looking at probably a monthly schedule uh, and meeting with the commerce staff uh, as well as our calendar for the coming year. Um, so that really will define what the position will be and how we can best staff it and what the expectations, the reasonable expectations of the city as well as the downtown board, Main Street board should be for that position. Um, it also will help us inform on what the duties uh, and skills should be. We know it's an administrative position. Uh, but for instance, should they be uh, have a more of a background in real estate and property management or more of a background in graphic design and promotions, um, these are decisions we need to make um, as we hone that, that position. We have uh, drafted one that kind of encompasses everything. That's a bit much for a part-time position and we need to, to define that. And I think that this kickoff meeting will allow us to do that uh, as well as leverage the resources of our uh, now somewhat larger planning staff, um, and uh, along with that. So we've got three planners we can bring to the table uh, to support this position and we need to make sure that uh, we use those resources and match them with a good job description to get someone in the door. He's going to have a whole lot to do and make sure they've got a whole lot of support to do that job well.
And one last thing, uh, what's the expected timeline? The coordinator, downtown coordinator hired first and then uh, that possibly a downtown vision committee or vice versa?
Um, I think they'll be on parallel tracks. Um, the, the board needs to be convened quickly uh, to and that will be something that we get coached on. Uh, that's why they have a downtown associate uh, community essentially apprenticeship program for the next three years that both Meven and Graham are a part of right now. Um, is to help us um, select a board and, and put out requests for board members who will be well-served. Um, whose time will be well-served as well as um, will serve the, the needs of, of the Main Street program well. Um, and then uh, we also need to get that position filled quickly. So I think we're going to be doing both. Pretty much in parallel to each other.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Stover.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sam.
Go ahead. All right, we'll get into public hearings now. Uh, our first public hearing is an economic incentive grant. Uh, Mr. Cheek.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me okay. Um, want to talk briefly about uh, a performance and incentive agreement that uh, we are proposing uh, with United Parcel Service. And uh, I'd like to just get right into the details. Um, and then I'll introduce Mac Williams, who uh, will introduce some UPS representatives. So uh, the big thing is UPS is looking to invest uh, in Meven uh, two hundred and sixty-two point two million dollars on a facility, which I think they'll talk a little bit more about uh, later. And um, there, uh, as part of that facility, they will be employing four hundred and fifty-one full-time jobs at an average sal- salary of over sixty-five thousand dollars, which uh, produce an annual payroll of al- almost thirty million dollars uh, plus the benefits with it. Um, and I'm sure there'll likely be some, potentially some part-time jobs with that. Uh, they are locating in the North Carolina Commerce Park and just to remind everyone, including the public, uh, uh, back in twenty-twelve, we uh, put together an agreement uh, with Graham, uh, with Alamance County and with Meven, uh, which became known as the North Carolina Commerce Par- Partnership. And we uh, share all revenues um, and share all expenses in that area. Uh, and um, so this is that area you see at the top of this map, um, I forty. And you see the site that UPS is looking uh, at as a potential site in North Carolina. Uh, you also, I, I marked uh, where Prescient's located, Walmart Distribution Center, Lidl Distribution Center. Uh, Windsor Capital is uh, built another speculative building, uh, and then Samit also has a spec building that aren't on this map yet. Uh, I grabbed this map from uh, uh, Google um, before the meeting. So that's where it'll be located. The, the partnership is proposing uh, in total, the, these incentives. Um, uh, there's seven acres of land that Graham and Meven own together, uh, that's valued at four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We are going to waive fees up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're going to offer uh, cash incentive grants totaling over three point nine million dollars for total incentives of almost four point six million dollars. Um, and as, as I just explained, the partners will share those incentive costs equally, uh, one-third each. Um, and these are some of the uh, main uh, paragraphs of the uh, performance and incentive agreement. Um, I just na- uh, named uh, B and C is just redundant. Um, uh, number, the paragraph number one talks about the cash grants. Cash grants have totaled a little over three point nine million dollars. So each uh, each entity in the partnership will pay one point three million or a third. And that is, that's going to be the case throughout all of these numbers. Um, and the first grant uh, would be issued according to paragraph one A. Um, uh, one year after certificate of occupancy. And then it would be four more grants each year after that. And these grants also go with how timely the project meets uh, certain goals. Um, uh, but each grant is limited to point five percent of the taxable value. Uh, which is how we came up with the three point nine million dollars in total grants. Um, there are performance clawbacks in paragraphs one D and one E if jobs or investments are not reached. Um, we are waiving up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in inspections, uh, utility connection, all of our. And then Meven and Graham, again, there was some property left over from creating the North Carolina Commerce Park that Graham and Meven share, uh, and that's part of that bigger piece of land I just showed you, uh, seven acres. Uh, I looked at the direct fiscal impacts over ten years and of course, these are projected numbers, but if, if everything happens exactly as the estimates uh, say they are and there's uh, five percent depreciation rate on personal property, we'll bring in twenty-three point three million in property taxes, first ten years. We'll pay out the four point six million in incentives, uh, netting uh, direct financial benefits uh, to this, out to the county, city and both cities of eighteen point seven million. Uh, Meven would, numbers would be one-third of these numbers. And that is my last slide. Uh, so with that, uh, I'd like to introduce our economic developer, uh, uh, Mac Williams, who's with the Alamance Chamber.
Good morning, good afternoon. How is everybody doing?
Great. Thank you, Matt.
You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. I was, uh, I was on vacation, but I'm now back at work. I was doing my virtual slides. So thank everybody for this opportunity to uh, to be here this evening. Uh, we're excited about this potential opportunity for Alamance County and from Meven. Uh, we've got Kevin Zolatell, who's a senior project manager with UPS. He's in the real estate and operations side of the project uh, and is with us tonight to uh, talk more about the details of the project, answer your questions uh, and uh, respond to any comments. So I'll just introduce uh, Kevin Zolatell. Also with him tonight, available to talk if he needs to be brought in to assist with answering questions is Tom Healy, also with UPS. And so I'll introduce him. He may or may not need to speak, but he is also with us tonight from UPS. And so with that, I, I'm gonna um, recognize Kevin Zolatell. Kevin, welcome. Thank you for your patience with us this evening as we wrestle with um, with uh, technical issues, but we're glad you're here and we're looking forward to hearing about the project.
Thank you, Mac. Uh, again, my name is Kevin Zolatell. I'm a senior project manager for UPS. Can everybody hear me out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Welcome.
Welcome. Like to uh, thank you uh, for allowing me an opportunity to uh, talk about our project. Like to review a proposed UPS facility. And it was uh, on the site that was previously shown. It's about a hundred and sixty-five acres just south of Interstate forty. And uh, this site would allow us to build for our current needs and would also allow us to build for two future expansions to meet our uh, future growth opportunities in the area. Our preliminary site development plan for the site would allow us to construct about a five hundred and twenty-one thousand square foot main hub facility along with some support facilities that would include an automotive shop, a vehicle wash bay, a customer center and an employee entrance to the site. It would give us the ability to process about a thirty thousand uh, packages per hour in the facility along with smaller packages, about fifteen thousand per hour, smaller packages. And it would allow us um, about a hundred and fifty package car positions. That's a full-time package car driver. Um, we have tractor trailer drivers, which we call feeder drivers. They would also be domiciled and working at this location in trend, uh, transporting the trailers from facility to facility. And then we also have full-time inside positions. So the total projected uh, full-time job opportunities is four hundred and fifty-one full-time job opportunities. And there will also be part-time opportunities to support this operation. Uh, this, this building would um, also give us ability in the future to expand to process forty-five thousand packages per hour. In the maximum site capacity would be fifty-eight thousand packages per hour. Um, so we, we've been working on uh, some preliminary uh, site development plans. And where you see the building located, we're just off, just south of uh, Highway forty, Interstate forty would be the best position for the main building. And then we would uh, build the support buildings around that. Uh, employee parking and also trailer staging. And then it would have a uh, remote automotive shop in the wash tunnel and an employee entrance. And it is located, um, our main entrance for the employees would be directly across from the Walmart warehouse, distribution center there. But again, um, thank you for um, this opportunity and for considering uh, the incentives package. Um, I think that the uh, site would meet our needs. It is a challenging site. There are some things we need to work around with the uh, stream there and um, getting to the site, but I, I think all of that can be done and can be engineered. So with that, that uh, that's what we're looking at, an opportunity to build this area and uh, open it up if anyone has any questions.
Any uh, questions from the council?
I have one for David, uh, it's just, just out of curiosity. When we waive a hundred and fifty thousand in fees and, and, and supposedly this is a third package for each of the three entities. Does Graham and Alamance County reimburse us fifty each for those fees?
Yes, uh, all, all cost, uh, incentives, fee waivers, land uh, or shared one-third, one-third, one-third. So even the land, I, I believe Alamance County will likely reimburse us a third of that cost as well.
David Everett Green, that was going to be my next question. The four hundred and ninety that Graham, four nine thousand that Graham and Meven are giving, the county will participate in that?
As far as I know, uh, that estimate of four ninety uh, was, is a ballpark estimate. We may have to actually get it appraised, but that's basically what ED land's going for along the highway.
But they will participate?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do we know how many trucks an hour?
How many trucks? How many trucks an hour?
Yes.
Um, we are working on a, a traffic study. Uh, it's not complete yet, but we do have um, the peak hour identified in that report and that will be submitted along with our site development plan.
My question is, do all of the trucks come out of the main drive through the industrial park out onto Trolingwood? Is that the only exit for all of this traffic?
There, there's um, we're going to have two uh, entrances for tractor trailers and they will have access to the main uh, industrial park street. And our employees will also use that same street. And then depending on where they're going, wherever the shortest path to their delivery destinations uh, for the, for the brown trucks, they will take the shortest path to where their, their delivery areas. Some could turn right and some could turn left. The tractor trailers will go to the nearest uh, interstate exit, whichever one's nearest to get onto the highway to get to the uh, hub or package center location that they're going to.
Are there any, um, Mac, are there any improvements to the Trolingwood uh, road itself?
At this moment, I'm not aware of uh, of plans that have been identified and prepared for. That may be why the traffic study is being done to determine, to determine that.
Okay. These four hundred and fifty-one jobs, will these be brand-new jobs to Alamance County, Meven, Graham, or will they be transfers from Greensboro and Raleigh area?
This is a new facility. We are not closing any facilities that resolve this, so they will be new jobs.
And part-time jobs, any idea, ballpark?
Um, our estimate is a thousand ninety part-time jobs.
And, and so I know that um, the average salary for full-time employees is sixty-five thousand. What would be a starting salary for a full-time employee at this facility?
I'm not sure on the starting salary. Um, there's different jobs. There's hourly, which um, hourly wage, which is based on the contract. And then you have your management salaries. You're going to have full-time supervisors, managers, division managers that operate this. They're all part of the full-time job opportunity. But, but I don't know what the starting salary is for the drivers for this facility. It'd be based on the uh, Teamster contract.
Are there any plans for UPS Flight Forward here for that program?
I'm not familiar with Flight Forward program. I'm, I'm in the engineering field.
You have a, what? Wake Med drones?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not involved in the drone program. I'm in the construction field, building the buildings and conveyor systems. So we haven't had any uh, drone uh, projects in our facilities. But I know we are delivering some medical devices with drones in some locations.
Yes.
The medical field. But that would be more of a question for the operation. But that would be more of a question for the operations folks, but that's, that's not something in their design day that they've asked for here.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Stephanie, were there any public comments?
No, sir.
No one signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council. If there are no further comments, we need to make a motion to continue with this to the October, I mean, excuse me, September Wednesday meeting, which will be the 16th.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a hearing? Do we leave it open?
You, you leave the hearing open, Mr. Green, and it will need to be a roll call vote, as you remember, on the motion to continue, and then, of course, a roll call when you vote on the incentives themselves.
I move we continue it to Wednesday, September 16th.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we need a So, Mr. Green?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Ewing?
Aye.
Ms. Auditory?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. That motion is passed and we will continue it to Wednesday night, September 16th.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys, and thanks, Mac.
Thank you, Mac.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll see you, we'll see you Wednesday night.
Thank you very much.
All right, the second public hearing is an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of ABB. And Mr. Lawson Brown will, will narrate that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a hearing to determine whether you want to incorporate into our jurisdiction by annexation, voluntary annexation, 101 acres plus that the ABB facility sits on, located on the industrial drive on the north side of I-40, I-85. On the August 3rd meeting, you accepted the petition for annexation and the clerk's certificate of sufficiency and set a public hearing for tonight. And what staff is asking is that you continue the hearing with favorable recommendation for annexation. As you will recall, ABB is the recipient of, or will be the recipient of incentives from Orange County and from the city of Meben, and the prerequisite to the Meben incentives is that this 101 acres has to be located within our city jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Any, any questions for the council? Again, it's a public hearing. Were there anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, just like the first one, we need a motion.
Make a motion to Wednesday night.
We have a motion and we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, any further discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, we need a roll call. Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Ewing?
Aye.
Ms. Auditory?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
The motion passes to continue for our next hearing on the 16th. The third public hearing is a quasi-judicial Board of Adjustment Special Use for the Elementary Secondary School Bradford Academy, Christian Academy. And they have requested to continue this to our October 5th council meeting. So I need a motion to continue the public hearing until October 5th.
The move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Roll call. Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Ewing?
Aye.
Ms. Auditory?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. The fourth public hearing is a conditional zoning, B2 conditional use to R6, see the artisan at Meben, and Mr. Stover will be opening the discussion on that.
Yes, sir. We, as you noted, we have the, the request before you as a conditional rezoning request from Conditional Business Zoning District to an R6, our densest residential zoning district. It's a part, it's a, an area of an existing parcel, just over 12 acres of the Tanger Outlet Mall parcel, right off of Interstate 40 and fronting Arrowhead Boulevard. This eastern property boundary is defined by the Orange County, Alamance County line. And this property is located pretty centrally to the city. It certainly is prominent off the interstate. If we zoom into the comprehensive plan layers, you'll see that it is in a G2 secondary growth, or I'm sorry, G4 secondary growth area, but it's within 1,000 feet of our Cameron Lane Mixed Use Primary Growth Area. There is a floodplain conservation area flowing through the middle of the project. However, there are no other particular matters related to the comp plan to speak of. This is currently the overflow lot for Tanger Outlet Malls. It's most frequently used sometimes on sales weekends, but Black Friday, Thanksgiving weekend through Christmas. This is, was discussed at length in the planning, at the planning board meeting and is available in the minutes from that meeting. The parcel, however, the undeveloped area is part of a master plan for Tanger Outlets that is the conditional use from it that was approved by council previously. It features three restaurants and two hotels. The hotels would have been visible from the interstate. So right now that area is forested, it's vacant. And, but what is the vested right that applies, given the active development of this master plan, is for three restaurants and two hotels. I don't believe I covered that in enough detail in my planning report. The proposed use is for 85 townhomes that'll sit on either side of that stream. The, there will be an eight-foot gravel walking trail. The townhomes will front Arrowhead Boulevard and be rear-loaded. There will also be, so there will be no garages seen from Arrowhead Boulevard. There's been a waiver request, several waiver requests that apply to this conditional zoning district, but one is about the streets that load to those rear-loading garages, Streets C and D. In addition to the eight-foot gravel walking path that would be privately maintained, there is an amenity center with a pool that would serve residents of this community, the Artisan. There are several waivers that you'll note in your packet, most have to do with the, our standard waivers that we see for even single-family, for all of our single-family residents, but certainly for our townhomes regarding lot width reduction and smaller lot sizes. This developer is also requesting greater lot coverage. Standard coverage is 40% threshold. They're requesting 55% threshold. I did mention the smaller internal road widths for Road C and D to those rear-loading garages, and then a total parking space reduction from 213 to 195 in the plans that were most recently provided to the city staff for review. With that, I believe I'd be happy to turn it over to Paul Koontz, who will be speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Can you answer a couple of questions first, Si?
Of course, sir.
The, the requested size of the lot, square footage-wise, is a third of what our our policy calls for, correct?
That's correct, yes. Most of the townhomes that are built in the city are below that threshold, but yes, it is a third of the minimum.
And our policy allows for it to go down to roughly half-size, but this goes down to a third?
So the, so there's what the ordinance allows, and then there's what state law regarding conditional zoning districts allow, which is that these are custom zoning districts. So the waiver from that threshold is being requested by this developer. And that can be approved by, by the council if, for this particular zoning district, but it would not be allowed elsewhere. That is correct.
Did, during the technical review committee, was there any concern from Public Works with trash collection on those reduced street sizes?
I think the, the developer's engineer can speak to that more so, but yes. And there's a lot of discussion with Utilities Director Kyle Smith about that. And they originally proposed more of an alleyway road, and the roads that are being provided, I believe, are 32 feet wide, but are lacking sidewalk and I think curb on one side. So they should accommodate the garbage trucks. And there was discussion with the fire department about accessibility of the, of all the units. And they all are accessible, not from those internal roads, but from the surrounding roads, and the hydrants were placed so that they would all be served.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Si.
Of course.
Any other questions to Si?
Yeah, Si, do we, we've done reductions before for townhomes on the width, width of a lot. Do you know what we have done in the past on? Obviously, the UDO didn't contemplate townhomes very successfully. It's a different sort of development than we have, than regular single-family development. So, for instance, the ones on Oakwood Boulevard, on Oakwood Drive, how wide are those lots?
Give me one moment.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. They are on average, so the typical lot and the minimum lot width for those is the lot width appears to be there, theirs are more in the neighborhood of about 40 feet.
Okay.
Based on their typical.
Si, does that show you the setbacks, side setbacks, front and rear?
Yes, sir. Front setback, Townsend Oakwood Square is 20 feet, rear is 20 feet, side is 10, of course, except for the, the shared wall, which is zero.
I've got a question about parking. I know they're asking for a reduction in the number of parking spaces required, but there, it looks like they all have garages rear-loading, so I'm not even sure I understand why there's a parking lot to begin with.
So that's, so that is largely at the amenity center for visitor parking. And if you look at like the villages at Lake Michael or the townhome section of Cambridge Park, they're frequently provided some, it's common to provide visitor parking on-street as well as dedicated spaces. They have requested not to provide that, and I believe their engineer can speak to that further, but yes, you are correct. There are one-car garages, there is enough storage in the driveways to, for another car, and then there's spillover, some spillover parking at the amenity center, but not enough to satisfy our ordinance.
Okay, it's, it still seems like a lot of parking if each each space has, has two parking spots.
I think the applicant can speak to that further. I think if you, at the planning board meeting, they mentioned that those are the dedicated spaces. There are spaces they are not showing due to road taper, and certainly unless regulated by the city, the streets could be used for on-street parking if they can accommodate them. Certainly, Road A is wide enough, but that is not dedicated parking. It's just an option
Right.
for visitors.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to be clear, they're not all rear-loading. The ones that are on Arrowhead Boulevard are rear-loading, but the other ones have front garages, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said the alleyways behind had curb and gutter on, only on one side?
Yes, sir.
What's on the other side?
Um, I have to pull up the typical. One moment.
Maybe this is for the engineer, Si.
I think they've provided that information, but yes, they could speak to this, this and the parking in more detail. So they are providing, if you look at the typical section on the site plan of their
Be curb and gutter on both sides.
That's curb and gutter on both sides.
Yeah, that stands to reason.
Yeah, no, they're providing curb and gutter on both sides. I misspoke. They're not providing sidewalk on both sides. I apologize.
Is Ms. Blackman the engineer? It looks like she's on.
Mm-hmm.
I am. I'm with Timmons Group, but Paul Koontz, I think, is gonna speak first, so I'm available for any questions.
Okay, if there's nothing else from Mr. Stover, Paul, you ready?
There we go.
Paul, you may be muted. Press star six. Yep.
You are.
Okay, now you got me?
Yep.
Fantastic. Do we have some video too? Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to present this project tonight, and you got, and you have, as you always done, jumped to some really fantastic questions. Let, let me introduce you first to our team and Beth Blackman, who you've already pointed out is the engineer from Timmons Group that'll address a lot of these details. We also have Brett Baznight and Ben Graves, who are Long Branch Development. That's the developer. And then we also have Charles Warsome from Tanger. You know, one of the advantages of going through a, a multi-month TRC review is that you get to really hammer on a lot of these details. And, and I know this townhome project is a little different than, than what you guys have looked at in the past. I think that's one of the reasons that many of your members of the planning board loved it, because it, it was different and it was really a good use of this property. I, I want to take you back to what it's zoned for now. Right now, it's approved to do commercial retail hotels. So as we talk about parking and the impacts of parking, I, I just, this site is designed to keep all of our parking use on this site. So there, there's enough parking for everybody that's there, and Beth, Beth will talk about that. If it were developed as retail and as hotels, and, and you guys know that right now on certain days of the year, it's used as overflow, but if it had been developed as commercial, there's no way that it would have been able to keep all of that parking on-site, and on overflow days, it would have increased that overflow. So what we're trying to do is move this into a residential use, and that's why we have the Tanger folks here to talk if there's any additional questions about parking. And, and I'll, you guys are already, your, your brains are already 10 steps ahead of where I was. And, and I just, so let's go on and get to some of the detailed questions about the parking spaces and the design of this, because when we look at the Because when we look at the waivers, you know, the reason that you can get to kind of a clustered townhome development is that you have to have waivers to get there because your ordinance doesn't allow us to, it's not really designed to handle townhome developments like this. So if, and so the structure ends up being that there are some waivers in terms of size of lot. What we're trying to do in the design is to keep as much green space and amenity space as possible. And that's why some of your percentages get thrown off. So I will, I think probably the best thing to do is to turn it over to Beth Blackman to address a couple of these specific questions that you guys had about, you know, curb and gutter on both sides and parking issues and how we've addressed those in the plan. Beth, you want to take that?
Sure. Thank you, Paul. Thank you to staff and to council for hearing this. We worked over a multi-month process, and we did start out with an alley, you know, traditional ribbon pavement, narrow-width alley. And the compromise that we worked out to make, somebody mentioned trash trucks, to work out with the trash trucks, the fire department, so that everyone was satisfied with what we had, was rear-loaded, that accessed basically the exact same street that Road A and B are. The only difference is the right-of-way is narrower. So instead of a forty-five-foot right-of-way, it is a thirty-five-foot right-of-way with the same thirty-five-foot back-to-back curb-and-gutter street in that, I'm sorry, thirty-one-foot back-to-back curb-and-gutter street inside of that that doesn't have sidewalk. And so that turns the alley into the exact same road that every other road in this neighborhood and roads in other townhome neighborhoods are. We just took away some of the extra right-of-way. And so that takes care of trash and fire access works out better for the services provided by the city. And then as far as the parking, we are counting two spaces per lot plus the extra amenity overflow parking lot to get to the number that we have. But they are planning, we're planning a wider driveway. But it doesn't fit a traditional car parking space, which is nine feet by eighteen feet. So you can't really count it. You know, if somebody has a Suburban, that's going to be difficult. If somebody has a small sedan, then they can park that and actually end up with an extra parking space in front of their unit. So it's a, there is plenty of parking on the site because your ordinance requires two spaces for every unit plus a half-space for every unit when there's more than two bedrooms in the townhome unit. So the parking required is pretty significant. And so we're trying to meet it without feeling like it's just a whole bunch of asphalt. So, but yes, all the units would have one-car garages. The ones that front on Arrowhead that are denoted with a A are rear-loaded. And the ones that are denoted with a B are front-loaded garages. And they would all have, you know, one or possibly two, the ability to park two cars in their front driveway. The amenity parking lot was amenity and visitor overflow. Plus, you have to have a location for a mail kiosk. So the postal service typically requires there to be a little bit of parking there for those. You know, hopefully, most people will walk, but rainy days or if you're on your way home from work, obviously, some people will stop and park there. I think that was my, all my notes about the questions that were asked, but I am certainly available for any additional questions.
Ms. Blackman, are you the person to ask about the stormwater retention pond and what's happening with the stormwater?
Yes, so the stormwater, the agreement with Tanger is that the stormwater basins that they are currently using would be utilized. The, most of the stormwaters actually go into the pond that is closer to Road A. But there is a old sediment basin that is closer to the interstate that was never converted to a stormwater pond. And so with the, this is, you know, the preliminary rezoning, preliminary design. So with the construction drawings and in the more detailed stormwater report, that would be studied to see what conversion was necessary for that existing stormwater. It's basically just a sediment basin. It was just an erosion control basin. But the one that is closer to Tanger in the Road A location is a stormwater device now.
Okay, so when I'm driving on the interstate and I see that sedimentation pond that's next to Tanger, it doesn't look very good.
And that one is the one that is the sediment base, is not the one that's the sediment basin. I don't think that one's visible. The one closer to Tanger is the stormwater pond.
Okay, I believe that at the planning board, there was some commentary from folks who lived in a subdivision on the other side of the interstate that said they were having some problem with stormwater runoff with flooding. And I guess I just want to hear some confirmation that all of those issues are going to be addressed appropriately and that any engineering drawings that you bring forward are going to appropriately address that.
So we would study everything that was necessary. The typical is that you cannot increase the runoff more than you, it is currently. Now, the site's a little strange because it was sort of halfway developed, I guess. Normally, you're looking at precondition, which is nothing has happened to the site, and post-conditioned, you're developing it. But we can work, we have, we can get access to, you know, Tanger storm reports that were done originally and incorporate with that with what is happening at the site now.
Thank you.
Where will people be legally allowed to on-road park in this development? I'm guessing there are some limitations on Road C, obviously.
Well, so as Road C, Road C and D are the same width as Road A and B. Like, the actual pavement width is exactly the same. The only thing that's different is the right-of-way, which most people are not going to even realize where the right-of-way is at. So on-street parking isn't, if the developer would like to speak to what they regulate in their HOA, typically that is regulated by the city.
Hey, guys, this is Brett with Long Branch. We are the applicant for this project. Thank you very much for your time this evening. And Beth, thank you for going over that for us. At most of our communities, we do not allow on-street parking. That's why we have a large visitor area over by the amenity center. These units were designed to keep in mind the ability to park in the garage. All of them have attached garages. And as Beth mentioned, we have tandem parking spaces outside the units. So most of these will be two-bedroom units. We will have some three-bedroom units. But the majority of units here, you would also have, you'd have a garage space, a tandem space behind that, and then sufficient room for the third parking space for a visitor.
The garage is just one car wide, though, right? One Civic.
That is correct. The garage is one car wide.
Not a Suburban wide. How do folks get from the amenity area to Road C? How would they walk about that way? And I guess the western side of Road A to those units?
We have sidewalk connections through the property. Your staff was very keen on that. It's something that we want. So we went through five iterations of the plan with the staff, and our primary undertaking there was to make a pedestrian-friendly plan. So there's a sidewalk connection to every unit, and every unit can reach the public realm. So from the amenity center, you would travel down D, and then you would cross the sidewalk to Road A to reach your destination.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I could clarify one thing about, you know, we were talking about what size of vehicle. I believe what Beth Blackman was referring to was the driveway in front of the garage. The garages are standard size. I mean, they're not, they're not a limited garage. It's just that there is also going to be a driveway in front of that garage. Now, would you be able to park a Suburban in that? You're going to struggle with that. But a smaller vehicle, you could do that.
Yeah. If I can elaborate on that really quickly, the, I'm sorry, Beth, if I can elaborate on what Paul and Beth are speaking to. The building that gets pinched a bit is one A through four A because of the setback. There, all the other units would be able to fit that tandem space and then another car behind the drive. That's really the pinch point, as you can see on the plan.
And that, I was going to say, is the front setback is still twenty-five feet? So that would fit any car. A typical parking space is nine by eighteen. So it is the extra space on the side that might be more suited for a smaller car.
Will these units all be for rent or will any of them be owned?
They'll be for rent, ever.
Hundred percent?
Yes. Managed by our client. And unless it's changed, I had a note that rents were going to be in the fifteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred dollar range. Is that right, Brett?
That is correct.
Mr. Stover, do we have any data and figures on rentals versus homeownerships here in Meven? Staff's compiling a report on that very subject at the request of the planning board, but no, we don't have that at this time. Current figures show multifamily versus single-family. In terms of the active construction, we're right around, the units right now, thirty-seven percent are multifamily or likely rental units. The, but the approved units is closer to thirty percent of once all the single-family units are built out. Currently, the only rental units remaining are those at Meven Town Center that is adjacent to the Keystone Apartments. And then possibly these, we did calculate what the contribution of these eighty-five additional units would be to that breakdown. And it states around thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of the total number of approved units in the city. But again, once we have full build-out, that ratio would dip down to thirty percent. But we are working on a report. We would be happy to share with the council that the planning board did request, comparing us to our peers in the comprehensive plan as well as a few other communities in the area to determine if we're in the norm, if we're unusual, or if we're just maybe slightly right or left of center on that topic. I can't answer it tonight. That's fine. Thank you, Si.
Paul, you mentioned someone in Tanger was here, the overflow parking. When they use those, that lot for overflow parking, what's the plans for that now that we're gone?
Well, we've got Charles Warsome on this Zoom call, who is with Tanger, who can probably address that. Because we, from the very beginning of working on this project, that's the one thing that people have raised to us is what happens with that overflow parking space. So Charles, do you want to handle that?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. I can touch base on that. So just brief introduction, my name's Charles Warsome. I'm the Senior Vice President at Construction and Development with Tanger. We've been looking at this parking issue out of here for a while. You know, our program in the past has been to implement off-site parking shuttles. You know, this parking for the hundred, I think it's about a hundred and forty stalls is, was intended for a multi-tenant building or restaurant pads out there that yet, that have never been developed. So, you know, using it as overflow parking is just kind of a name that's taken on to its own. But it was intended for additional development out there. I would like to note that during the holiday season and such, we actually, those spaces actually fill up, and we do go off-site. We've been in, last year, I believe, we used cone and shelled employees as well as customers back and forth. We've implemented valet parking services to help with that remote parking situation. We've also brought in traffic control, whether it's off-duty Meven or on-security, to help manage the traffic flow. Because, I mean, let's face it, it's one of the things that we're very cognizant of, that we want our customers to be able to get in and out of our shopping centers smoothly, easily. And it's something we look at very closely, and we're already implementing an off-site parking program. And it's just something that we'll continue to do with the loss of these spaces. It might just expand somewhat to deal with the loss of these spaces.
So you were shelling last year, even with these spaces, available to you and, okay?
Yeah, it's one of those things we find, you know, Black Friday weekend, second Saturday in December. No, two or three weekends over the summer if we have a large event. But, you know, the day-in-and-day-out shopping, we really don't experience, it's just those high-impact days of the holidays and a couple of key weekends over the summer that we tend to see those spaces filling up and going over into, you know, even going into the remote parking that we set up.
And, you know, as developers of this project, I mean, we're also sensitive to this issue because obviously, we're going to have folks living there. And we're going to have two access points, one, you know, off of Arrowhead, and then one, Apple Cross Drive there. And, you know, we're going to have to control access to that neighborhood as well, just like the neighborhood up the street. I know there's been a couple of the neighbors up there have expressed concerns because they've had some issues in the past. So, you know, there's, so that's manageable. I think also using, in the past, that cone parking has been used for employees. But my understanding is in the future, that'll be used as a shuttle for customers by Tanger. So that'll also free up some space.
Paul, that begs a question. What were the employees parked in?
They're going to find another place to shuttle them to as well, you know. It's, it's, it's a, it's a problem. It's a good problem to have, you know. There are a lot of retail spaces in our country right now that would love to have that problem. And I understand, and I'm sensitive to the community needs because, you know, my client's developing a residential community, and they don't want folks parking all over their streets either. So we're going to have to control access to that during those times, during those few times of the year. And I think that we can do that in conjunction with Tanger as well.
Yeah, and it's something that we look very closely at. It's not just the retail customers, but the employees trying to, you know, in essence, free up parking by setting up remote locations for the retailers so that their employees can park them. We shuttle them back and forth. Because, you know, once again, you know, we want to make this as easy and as comfortable for our customers when they come to visit us during these peak shopping hours. So it's something we're very cognizant of. We're, you know, we're going to have neighbors right next door to us in addition to being across the street with the townhome residents. So it's something we're going to work very closely with Long Branch and our retail partners to free up as much of the on-site parking as we can during those peak hours on the holidays.
The reason I'm so concerned about that, I remember when you had your, when you first opened out there, people were parking up across Meven Oak Road and loads of food. They were parking all over the place, anywhere and everywhere they could park. And I understand that, you know, people are trying to get to Tanger, which is a good thing, as you say. But they, they're going to park in places that you wouldn't believe just to get, just to get to it. So I'm trying to make sure we've got adequate, adequate resources for people to park and areas for them to park.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, to some degree, people are going to take the path of least resistance. And on those events, as I said, you know, when we're filling up that lot, we're going well and above, beyond that, which is why we're going to have the measures in place during the holidays, those peak periods with traffic control. People out there managing the flow of traffic, whether it's our security or off-duty police. I know our local GMs already had conversations about this holiday season. Us being the eternal optimist, that's going to be a great shopping season to, how can we manage the traffic out there? Both with utilizing remote lots, whether it's cone. Uh, both with utilizing remote lots, whether it's cone, uh that we have a relationship with, uh, one of the schools uh we, which we've engaged, talked about using, so it's at the forefront of our mind because once again, we don't want someone to have a bad experience and not come back again.
Oh, the uh, I mean, I've been, I've been to several Tang, other Tangers and uh, I don't know, uh, I don't know if you checked, if your sources have checked out the the uh cone parking lot lately, but since the buses have started collecting people there, I'm not sure you're gonna have much employee parking except in the evening hours, which doesn't really take care of the the Thanksgiving issue, but my concern is this. Oh, since this development, when we we approved this development years and years ago, it was a huge industrial site. And one of the concerns was jobs. And we didn't want to give up a huge industrial site for for residential. So some of us or most of us were convinced that Tanger brought in enough jobs that would be equivalent to an industrial site, which it did. The problem is gradually, since this site's been approved or this whole development in Arrowhead has been approved, we've gradually eliminated the B two or the business zoning. And what what does Tanger do long-term when they finally realize that people just stop coming to a place where there's not a nice restaurant? I mean, you go to the one in Severeville, Tennessee, for example, and there's a Chuck House there and another restaurant and an Olive Garden across the street. Uh, you can, you can crack at McDonald's, which is fine, but if somebody wants a really nice sit-down meal, I mean, where where is Tanger's long-term? The 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 long-term goals we were told when Tanger came in for this property and other properties along that strip for business restaurants, etc. I mean, it seems to me that, it seems to me that this is just another step of Meven giving away prime business uh zonings for residential, which we have plenty of.
So I I can speak a little bit to the history on this. Uh, you know, this, unfortunately, this property, it the uh, the easternmost portion of our development has had vacant since we opened. Uh, you know, I know we have spoken to numerous retailers. The down, you know, they really just don't like being across the creek, so to speak, and be removed from our shopping center. Uh, we've talked to numerous uh self-storage developers. Uh, for some, it was either, you know, for most of them, it was too big and we really weren't interested in parceling this up in the uh two and three acre little tracts on it. Uh, so we looked, talked to numerous self-storage, we talked to some industrial users. Uh, you know, wasn't big enough for them. So at this size of where we are on the the piece across the creek, that's about, I think, nine to ten acres. Uh, it's it's kind of a tweener, it's, you know, if we looked at a lot of limited service hotels, talked to a lot of developers for that, it was too far away from the interchange. So we, you know, our our first preference was for this to go to commercial and, you know, it we've been open there for several, several years now and just unfortunately not been able to find a commercial fit for it. Uh, you know, we've over the past had numerous multifamily guys approach us. Uh, none of them we thought were really fit, good fit. When Long Branch came to us on this uh opportunity, you know, we looked at what they were proposing, we thought it was quality. Uh, that was forefront in our mind. Uh, it's something a little differentiated, it's at a higher price point. Uh, so as we looked at this and knowing, you know, our unsuccessful attempts over the past years to attract commercial, we felt this would be a nice fit for a quality of a product to come in next to us. Uh, as to, you know, your your point on the restaurants and such, you know, we do have some food in the shopping center. I will, I'll tell you this, food for us, for whatever reason, at this center has never been successful. A lot of it has to do with our shopping patterns, you know, we find most of our traffic comes on, you know, Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, but if you want the full sit-down restaurant, what we've learned in our business is that, you know, they need that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday lunch, they can't just survive on Saturday and Sunday, which is our peak traffic demands, so you know, we're always looking to enhance our tenant mix. Uh, I know we have the hamburger gentleman, I think there's a sandwich and uh another one in there. You know, they've struggled at times, uh, just for a variety of reasons, you know, to the extent we could find a quality operator, we love to put them in there, but we've just found that restaurants, when they look at positioning in this retail corridor, would much rather be up on the main road versus down on a corner spot with us. And that's just unfortunately how it's played out uh in the market there. So that's kind of how we brought ourselves to this point and trying to bring in a quality development, now that's gonna be at a higher rental price point. Uh, this with a national home builder that's partnering with Long Branch on this, to build a really quality project, we think will be comparable to what we built there across the creek.
Well, I guess, I guess, I don't, I guess I, I don't see where Tangers, I mean, you're you're saying it's quality envelopment, you're gonna put a quality residential development in the in the middle of a massive residential development. I don't really, I guess I, I don't see where that the plus is for Tanger there. But when when you open the, it when the new enter, when the uh exchange, it matters fact, the road is open at some point in the future. I mean, you're gonna have traffic coming to Tanger from the other direction. But I don't know, it seems to me that uh the promises that were given and the the future futuristic plans that were given to the council when we moved toward this thing, we just gradually reduced it to uh housing, which we have a great deal of already. But that's all, that's all I have there.
Yeah, and Mr. Bradley, this is Brett at Long Branch. I appreciate your concerns. I I hope you guys see this project for what it is, a collaborative effort between our team and Tanger. Um, we're presenting what we believe to be a unique product type that we've worked hard with staff on that is walkable to the Tanger Outlet Center, so you know, y- you're right, it is more residential. But it looks a lot different than what is in the surrounding neighborhood here. It's walkable to Tanger, uh, should keep a lot of cars off the street. And although we are taking a small amount of parking away from the existing field, we're gonna work with Tanger hand in hand on that to make sure that the seasonal holiday parking and the few instances it occurs is well taken care of.
What will be the plan for Pear Tree Lane and actually down Eighth Streets, uh, for those that park off those streets during the high busy shopping seasons?
I think, this is Charles, you know, really, I think the solution there is having the active traffic management out in front on Arrowhead. I know in the past, there's uh with the off-duty Meven Police, they've actually set up controls at the entrance into those subdivisions and such. I think we probably had to do that once or twice uh in the past few years, we recognize it's an issue. It just goes back to coming up the server all traffic management plan that we're gonna work with Long Branch on uh to keep the flow of traffic going and minimize the impact on the neighborhoods around us. Uh, because once again, unfortunately, people tend to be lazy, don't, they're not the most courteous sometimes when it comes to that. Just trying to find anywhere they can park and have the shortest walk to the uh the shopping center. But you know, I think uh, you know, where that had happened in the past, a local management team learned from it. And uh, that's what we're gonna be working closely with, with our own security as well as uh city Meven Police to minimize any impact to the neighborhoods around us.
That's really, you know, the the only way to to control that is hiring security or off-duty Meven Police because you can't just barricade the area. I mean, a- all the folks that live in those neighborhoods are trying to get out and and shop on Black Friday too. Um, so it it's it's same thing with the 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 Artisan. But I have to have uh folks standing there, controlling that access to those neighborhoods. Um, and and protecting, you know, those neighborhoods from people coming in there and parking. Um, and you know, I've uh, we we've heard a lot from residents out there too, in the sense from a few that just said, look, you know, I can't get out of my driveway or folks are parking up in my yard. And and we don't want that to happen to anybody. We certainly don't want it to happen to our project either. So uh, i- i- if anything, that that heightened level of responsibility by the res- by the developer and the residents that are gonna live at the Artisan uh should improve the the traffic situation. Um, you know, yeah, with greater control, absolutely, um, but that's just gonna be a necessity.
Do you have any renderings of the property, what the construction's gonna look like, uh, what material you're gonna build with, etc.?
We do, we've included elevations in the submittal package.
What's what's the uh, what's the outside materials?
Uh, we have a mix of materials, siding and stone accent is the primary too. Um, and of course, all the units that face Arrowhead Boulevard are rear-loaded. Uh, there are front-loaded garages on the internal streets. But you'll have a, of course, a front door that creates a pedestrian access point to the major thoroughfare Arrowhead there.
Brett, what kind of siding is it? Is it vinyl or is it hardy plank or composite material?
Uh, we haven't, yeah, we haven't made a decision on that yet. Uh, in the past, we've used both.
We've we've had some subdivisions that have not been so successful with vinyl siding. And um, I think uh concrete composite material would probably be preferable. And um, also, this is slab-on-grade, is there um brick on the exterior?
It it is slab-on-grade, and so just taking a step back, all these units are two-story townhomes. They'll all have an attached garage, so it's a true two-story living experience. You have the kitchen and living room on the down floor or downstairs floor with an open floor plan. We'll have stainless steel appliances, uh, large cabinets, and the architecture form will be craftsmen. Upstairs, we'll have all uh the bedroom areas, so that's either a double master, which uh we do not currently see in the market, nor do we see in a lot of other markets, and we'll have a three-bedroom. So the master suites on these units will be generous with uh walk-in showers, glass shower doors, um, top-of-the-line appliance package, washer and dryers included.
If if you're looking for a picture in your uh five-hundred-and-twenty-five-page packet, um, page three forty-nine uh on the PDF has a, has has one picture in there amidst all of the uh engineering drawings.
Thanks, Paul.
And you said these are gonna be built by a national builder?
Yes, they will be. We're we're studying a few different options there. Um, I would need to seek approval to release who that is, but it's a builder that's uh present in the Triangle Market and actually has done some work in Meven.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the council? At this time. All right, it is a public hearing. Um, this shall, has anybody signed up to speak?
No one signed up to speak, but I do have a written commentary.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, this comes from Deborah, Deborah Greer. Members of the City Council, my name is Deborah Greer and I live at seven hundred Apple Paul's Drive in the Arrowhead Greens subdivision. I've owned this home for over seven years. I am restating my comments and concerns that were previously addressed to the planning board with regard to the rezoning of the area that includes the overflow parking for Tanger Outlets. Every year during Thanksgiving holiday weekend or Black Friday, that overflow parking lot becomes necessary for the large volume of shoppers that come for holiday shopping at the outlet. However, with the Arrowhead Greens community right across the street, we have become an overflow parking lot for shoppers as well. Depending on what Tanger establishes as their shopping hours, we begin to have people parking in our neighborhood late afternoon on Thanksgiving. This typically occurs after the two vacant lots off Arrowhead Boulevard have filled up with cars. Then it's non-stop with shoppers coming to, coming to park in Arrowhead Greens throughout the Thanksgiving holiday, Black Friday, and most of the day on Saturday. By Sunday morning, it does tend to taper off. However, the overflow parking area at Tanger stays full throughout the Christmas and New Year holidays. When the people come and park in our neighborhood, they park in front of our homes and often with barely enough clearance to enter and exit our own driveway safely. They are parking in front of our mailboxes, which delays or prevents the mail carrier from delivering mail on Friday and Saturday. We don't have sidewalks on both of the streets, so people are walking on our grass and in many instances are leaving their trash behind. My neighbor at seven oh two Apple Paul's Drive has repeatedly had people drive across his front lawn trying to exit from parking in the vacant lot located next to his home. His home is at the entrance to our neighborhood and he works very hard to have a nice yard. It is very unsett- unsettling to see the damage left behind. It's been frustrating each year to have to suffer someone's disregard for personal property. So the thing is, if the overflow parking lot goes away, I feel like the parking situation will become even worse for Arrowhead Greens. Where else will all the additional shoppers park? Over the last couple of years, we have observed Tanger's efforts to use a shuffle service and have employees park elsewhere. But my neighbors and I agree, there hasn't really been a noticeable difference. On occasion, the city, or maybe it was the police department, would place partial barriers at the Apple Paul's Drive entrance, and this did help considerably with the parking. It would be great if the city considered this as standing request to do so, possibly with some law enforcement presence. Maybe this would encourage more shoppers to take advantage of the shuffle service Tanger is providing. The overflow parking lot should stay, and my hope is that Tanger, with the city's help, can continue to find solutions for their customers to park outside of Arrowhead Greens. I respectfully ask that the council members review this further and take these comments into consideration before making a final decision. Thank you for the opportunity to address this, City Council, sincerely, Deborah Greer.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Chris, I have a question. Uh, can we legally close city streets uh to eliminate this parking? These parking problems?
So my gut is uh, you mean, so on Black Friday, temporary closed city streets?
Right.
I don't think we can without council action. I don't think we have the authority of staff to just shut down a city street without coming to council to shut down that street. So I think my understanding is what's happened in the past is Tanger has worked with the police department, not every year, but some years, to have a barricade over there and somebody over there to say this is a residential pro- parking only. And I may be wrong on that, but.
Well, you know, if this project's true, uh, you know, I think they, I think the uh, it just, this this problem will only get worse. But with the solution is, if we can every year have a standing, you know, for certain periods, certain days, you know, it's disconcerting to have parking in front of your thing. I look forward to my mail every day, that's the highlight of some of my days. And, you know, I really think we ought to, we ought to protect the neighbors, um, you know, uh, in in some way. So having said that, any other comments from the council?
M- Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, do you mean closing down the streets and only allowing residents or closing off for uh on-street parking?
Only only allowing residents to to be, to go through there, no parking. I I mean, I I already got through traffic, but uh, uh, you can't control that. So I would say close the streets for certain times at some, certain times a day, three days a year, uh, just a suggestion. You know, Mayor Hux, this is Charles Worsham, uh. You know, I I hear everybody's concerns here, and actually, I've got our general manager, Jeff Johnson's on this. Unfortunately, he's, you can only kind of send notes to the uh, the chat side of it. Now, this is something that we're very cognizant of. You know, I know Jeff has spoken with the chief of police already about this year, we've used them in the past. Uh, I just will let you know that your concerns are falling on deaf ears because once again, we we want to be good neighbors, we're an integral part of the Meven community. And this is something that'll be a priority for us. You know, to be candid with you, whether this rezoning happens or not, w- we recognize internally, we need to make sure this this doesn't happen and adversely impact our neighbors. Because even if that lot does fill, it spills over on these peak, these handful of days throughout the year. It and and unfortunately, that's, and rightfully so, that's all anybody's gonna remember, is the one time somebody does that in front of their house. So something we're very cognizant of, and we're already working on our holiday parking plans and such throughout the portfolio. Uh, and just let you know, this is something that will be focused on regardless of the outcome of this, which we we do hope is positive, a positive vote on it, but uh, you know, your concerns are not falling on deaf ears. All right, councilors, any other questions?
Yeah, I got, Paul, I went to the page, you said where it showed the example of the houses, and it actually showed some townhouses. What I'm seeing there is vinyl, vinyl, uh, and the only stone I see is on the base of the columns, which is on top, I mean, underneath a vinyl column.
That, and that was, that was just one of the, I know we submitted several other pictures that uh- had some different depictions of that. I think that's the only one that made it into your packet though, because there was three.
I'd love to see that.
Can you forward that to us, Paul?
We'd be glad to, and I know since you guys aren't voting on this until Wednesday, and, and I think your practice is just to continue the public hearing over to Wednesday. I'll be glad to send those additional pictures.
All right, any further questions?
No, I would just, I would like to point out that Jeff Johnson, the general manager at Tanger, has been putting stuff in the, the chat area, as Mr. Worsham stated. He says something, they've had barricades at the entrance the past few years that were manned by Meven police and only residents were allowed in. So I, I, what Mr. Worsham said about their efforts towards trying to protect the neighborhoods during these peak hours, I believe. I also strongly feel that we should not create larger parking lots than we, than we need to have. We should not have a bunch of asphalt that's only used for four or five shopping days in here or five or six weeks, because that's not very good for our environment. I don't think it benefits anybody. So if we can make it, make it work with the parking that's available now and just take precautions to protect the local neighborhoods, I think that that's a win for everybody.
Just a couple of things. Said only residents were allowed in. I'm guessing we're talking about Arrowhead Greens? Jeff? So like numbered streets, again, Eighth Street, Pear Street, people are still allowed to park up and down that?
Sean, I think that the issue becomes how wide an area we're going to cover and how big is the impact of Tanger Outlets? I never would have thought that people were parking on your street because it's pretty far away. So I guess that's something that we need to examine.
And I'd be remiss, I've just, from residents asking me questions, I know it's probably costly, exorbitant, but Mr. Worsham, I'm guessing parking garage, a couple-story parking garage is out of the question right now?
You know, it is at this point. I mean, it kind of goes back to, you know, parking, you know, building out a huge parking lot for five days out of the year, 10 days out of the year. So it's, you know, if we were to ever physically expand and try to add more retail there, it would probably warrant parking garage now. To add the garage really would not make much economic sense, or frankly, we'd be building a garage that probably wouldn't be fully utilized except for, for those peak periods of time. And that's a several million dollar investment. So, I mean, I do, I will point out that even with the removal of these spaces, we're going to meet, we still meet the parking requirements of the development. Going back to the original approval, which is around four per thousand, I think we actually might be 20 or 30 over, once you do the math on it. And, and the national trend, you know, is to go to lower parking ratios as a councilwoman Phillips said, you know, gone are the days of seeing the mall with the sea of parking around it that only fills up 10 days out of the year. The trend that we've seen, you know, throughout the industry and not just with us specific is why it used to be five per thousand is trending down to four and a half, four per thousand. Some are actually, some municipalities are taking the opposite approach of putting a cap on the amount of parking you put in versus a minimum approach. So the industry trend is to less parking and trying to manage the peak demands in alternative ways versus building out the, the sea of asphalt to accommodate those peak demand, peak days a few days out of the year.
Yeah, I, I would just like to echo what Patty said and what you just said, Charles, as far as too much parking and, and I'm glad you pointed out that, that even without this overflow parking, you still are meeting our ordinance requirements for parking. So I think it's, while I'm, I'm concerned about the 10 days of the year where residents are inconvenienced and, and if there's a, there's mayhem with, with all the parking, I want to be sure that we evaluate this project on its worth as a rezoning issue and not on a parking issue because they are meeting code with or without this, without this overflow parking.
I, I agree with Jill and Patty. I don't, this, this, that overflow parking, you're not going to make or break the parking issue. I don't, I don't imagine when it's gone, you'll notice any difference. Jill will be terrible. Thanksgiving night is going to be terrible through that weekend and several days during December. My issue is with this constant evolution of someone comes in and this is what we're going to do, and these are our long-range plans, and we end up after a while, just sticking more residential within residential, within residential. And limiting, limiting interstate access property that's business-related, although there might not be an immediate need for it long-term, which was what we were told when we zoned it to begin with, long-term, there very well may be. I think we're giving up some, we would be giving up some prime business real estate, just like on Cameron across the other side, if we allow the interstate side of these roads to be developed residential, which we have plenty of throughout the city. But I agree, parking's not going to be the major issue here. It's going to be bad anyway on those days.
Jeff, did I see that as a possible commitment to have shuttles go between our lovely downtown and Meven, or and Tanger?
For parking?
Oh, I don't know. I just saw shuttles there in the chat there.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's, I apologize, Jeff's on the, the other line. It, it's, you know, I think, you know, one of the things we've talked about with trying to promote cross-shopping and such, as always downtowns and everything, but, you know, I think going back to what, where we're going a moment ago, you know, it's on one hand, you know, it can be a nuisance. It's something we need to do a better job of maintaining. The other side of it, you know, it's, it's kind of something we need to manage. You know, I think trying to get into requiring shuttles and everything for three days out of the year, you know, might not be a need this year or next year given the environment we're in. We might be talking about the parking issue in three years. It'd be a problem. So what I, what I think the more productive outcome of all of this is, you know, we recognize there's an issue with it. Jeff, our GM, has already been speaking with the chief of police, that collectively, we just need to look at what's going on in that area and make sure we manage the impact, that there's not a negative impact to the neighborhoods surrounding us.
Okay, any other further discussion? All right, do we have a motion to continue this to Wednesday, the 16th?
I'm moving, continuing to Wednesday, the 16th.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right, roll call. Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Ewing?
Aye.
Ms. Altore?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. We'll continue it to Wednesday, the 16th. Paul, thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank y'all.
We're moving into the consent agenda. And I'm waiting for Mr. Rollins to do the first slide. The first one is the approval of our minutes of August 3rd and August 5th. The final plat of Meven Oaks, Lot 3, Enden Properties. Final plat Magnolia Glen Estates, Phase 2B. Final plat Villas on Fifth, Phase 2B. Final plat Havestown, Phase 1A. The new fee schedule amendments in the Recreation Department. The city conducting a citywide facilities assessment and capital plan. Proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Board of Adjustment Appointments. And our Budget Ordinance Amendment carried forwards from 2019, 2020. Is there any?
On J?
Budget ordinance.
Yes, sir. Uh, we are doing, I think it's $48,000 roughly for Wayfair sign, but we had budgeted $75,000. Why are we spending, that's all we're spending?
Everett, that is a carryover of unspent funds. We had budgeted last year $75,000. A lot of the signage we hit, we planned will be affected by the bypass and all the new roads that are connecting into the city from the bypass. And we're also still working on some easements for some of those signs with some of the private entities that, that, where they may be located. So it's just, that wayfinding signage is, is just taking, as you know, several years, and we, we just started this year getting some signs out. And with all the road changes going on, it's just moving slowly.
So this will be, be coming back later to get the rest of the 75?
We're.
Am I saying this right? I mean, the, the Wayfair sign, we put $75,000 deferred until NC 119 is completed.
Yes.
Budget session, and now we're spending $48,000 of that.
Well, we, we're carrying over $48,000 of the 75 that, so we spent the difference between 75 and 48 last year. So we're carrying over $48,000 that's left over into this year so we can continue the project.
So we're doing, we're really not doing that until 119 is completed. We're doing it now.
We're, we're, we hope to be able to do some of them this year, yes, before 119 gets completely done, but I don't, I don't know exactly which one Sandy has been in charge of that and.
We could have voted on, I mean, was that something that we should have? I mean, is it, we're just seeing this now after we've spent the money. Is that correct?
Well, these are, these are, these are already approved budget numbers, and if there's a project that's in process like that, that we didn't get complete, a lot of times we ask you to carry over the funds just so you don't have to re-budget it again. So we're just carrying over what hadn't been spent of the, the project.
So when I say deferred to NC 119 is completed, that's what I had, I had, we came out of our budget session with. So that's not really right, right?
Where are you reading that?
On the spreadsheet we got on our budget.
Is Jeannie on the line? Maybe she can assist me here. I'm, I'm, I'm talking from memory, but are you on, Jeannie?
David or Chris, can we pull up that? The council description that came with item J in our packets? There, there's a couple of things I don't understand about it either. I, I.
Yeah, I think, I think we can. Chris will have to do it, but.
David, it would probably be easier. Can you get in your packet from your computer and share the screen?
Yeah, I can share my screen. Hold on a second.
That would clearly be easier.
Okay, I think you have to stop sharing.
Yes, I'm headed there.
Okay.
Looks like Jeannie's here now too.
Okay. Am I sharing with y'all, if I'm sharing the right screen?
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to see. There, there's, there's something, what's confusing to me is, number one, there were several items listed that we were going to do that doesn't, didn't sound like carry forward. For example, did we budget last year to fix the docks at Lake Michael?
No, that's something, that's something that Aaron asked for last year and we had to cut out. But, so. Well, honestly, so what I wanted to do is if he had some money left over, if you go down and look at those docks, they need repairing just as much as some of the other safety issues that we have. So I'm, I'm basically asking to carry over some funds from last year that were left over to do those docks.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not really debating the, the need of the docks right now as much as I am. This seems to me to be, this seems to me to, to say, well, we had a budget session. We decided what we were going to budget, but staff has collectively decided that we've got some additional items. And if you go back to the next page, Chris, you say it's money left over, but it's taking the use of surplus funds from two-point. Go down.
Okay. Am I on the right page now?
Keep going down, Chris, down to Article 2. So you're, you're taking the appropriated fund balance from 2.1 million to 2.89, almost 2.9 million, which is, that's another $800,000 that we're appropriating out of fund balance. So where is the leftover money?
Uh, these are just, now that's a total of all the funds that we're carrying over, some, some of those being the project. Jeannie, how much was, were the extra items we tried to squeeze in here from other leftover funds? For the docks and the other items in recreation?
Uh, there was the amount that's showing there under recreation.
388?
The majority of that is, is docks. And part of that is something that was, and I don't have all of that out in front of me right now, that was purchase orders that we carried forward.
Another issue was the lighting. And I remember this specifically because I, I said at the budget session that we had projects like lighting and other safety issues that we were not covering, but we were going to borrow money for some other things. I remember that discussion, but I mean, I, it just seems to me that we had a budget session that we decided what our priorities were for this year, give or like them or lump them. And now this, this, rather than just our normal standards, we're carrying forward, carrying forward projects that were budgeted last year that were not completed, we're carrying forward the money and the project. That's what we normally do, but this is adding items that were not budgeted last year that we discussed at budget time, that now we're throwing into the budget to the tune of whatever it ends up being, but I, I'm thinking it's more than 388.
So maybe if you, if you can go back to the, to the narrative,
Okay.
the main paragraph that contains numbers, if you start, in addition, there are projects to enhance security. So start right there with in addition. To your right. That, that starts describing the things that we are trying to add here that are additional to things that are just being carried over. So what those are doing is using not money that we had budgeted for these particular items, but money we had budgeted for other things that did not get done last year. But we'd like to morph those into these particular projects. So Mr. Bradley is correct that this did not go through the budget process. But that is what we're trying to do now. We're, we're trying to sort of combine two separate budget items into one.
And I, and I appreciate that, and, and. And I, and I appreciate that and, and, and I g- I guess my, my concern is this, we had a council budget session. Where we discussed the. Needs and what we could afford and what we could not afford, what we're gonna move forward and what we weren't. And these items are being thrown in, but there's a lot of items that we may have discussed at budget that. That we may prefer to throw in rather than these items. It just seems like them, to me, a way to subvert the budget process. With, without council input. And.
Yeah, I, and, and.
Let me, let me finish. You say it's leftover money. But it's taking us from two point one million. In use of fund balance this year to two point eight. So this, if it's three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars or whatever the number is. That would be money that we wouldn't use out of fund balance if we didn't do these projects, which we said we weren't gonna do at budget time. I guess I just feel like this is unfair to all the other projects. And presentations that were made at budget time that the con- council weighed, council weighed in on and didn't approve. And I made, you know, like I said, I have no problem with the lights. I brought that issue up myself. I know, have no problem with fixing the deck at Lake Michael. Uh, I guess it's just a. A, a feeling of, well, it's not fair to all the other. Projects that we discussed and didn't compare these against. So that, that's all I got to say. I, I. I would like to have this item considered separately, Mr. Mayor, from the. Uh, from the consent item.
To follow up on what uh, Mr. Bradley said, um, I agree that um. That there were repairs that are needed now for the community park lights because of the lightning strike that happened recently. But we did defer at budget time repairs to the lighting at Walker Field. And I understand that there are repairs to the lighting at the um, at the sand volleyball lot that need to be done as well. I think some of those may already be within budget. Maybe, maybe those repairs are already in the works. I don't know. There's probably some degree of um savings to be had from getting all of those electrical problems taken care of at one time. Um, I, and, and, but I also wanna say that I acknowledge that the staff is dealing with a very strange year. And that our budget session was predicated upon. Of nineteen and not knowing what was gonna be open and what was gonna be closed and how will we. How would we be able to proceed? So I do understand that from the, from the staff's perspective.
Well, I just wanna uh, thank y'all for the, you know, bringing this up. Um. I'll tell you what I was thinking. I have more information now than I had at budget time. I, I pretty much know how the year end for June thirtieth of twenty twenty is gonna end now. And it's gonna end better than we were uh, projecting at the time of budget. Uh, also, I know that. Sales tax is not ten percent down like we were projecting. It's so far been. Coming in pretty good, so. I'm, I'm, I may have been presumptuous and for that I apologize, but. I presumed these projects to be important enough to try to carry forward the funds. I, I believe even with carrying forward that fund balance. We would, we're still gonna be adding to the fund balance for last year and this year. So I'm just trying to keep projects moving or move, keep things going because. Again, department heads are, are asking me, trying to get this stuff done. It, these aren't like. Flashy projects. They're, they're really, some of it's maintenance, uh. The uh, increased uh reliance on. Remote services, just like what we experienced, the need, we've got some IT issues that need to be. Need to be dealt with and, and we can wait until the next budget process or we can get started on them. I'm not even sure we'll, we'll get through all of this, but I've always been the type to try to keep things moving. And I pre- I presume some things upon the council I probably shouldn't have, uh, that you might wanna do. I will say if, if. Jeannie has to make this budget amendment to affect. The year end for the June thirtieth audit, so. If, if you are gonna deny some of these, I'd ask you to deny specifically. Which ones and, and let us talk through those. Um, some of them like Tim has, and Everett. And Patty have noted are. Probably are subverting, uh, and I hate to use that word. It wasn't my intention. But they, they have uh, did sort of. We talked about them in the budget process, but we did not move forward with them. I'm suggesting at this point that we move forward with them, but. There's not a lot of detail provided to you, not enough, and I apologize for that as well. Well, can we, can we, um, can we vote for the budget ordinance? Amendment? And then have further discussions of what kind of projects we're gonna use that money for? Well, I, I think probably at this point, I would try to, I would ask Jeannie. What are the, uh, no, I'll call them normal carryovers versus. Things I was trying to push. Uh, to, you know, to, to move projects ahead and she. She, she may be able to tell you which numbers need to change.
Let me, let me just make, let, let me say this before. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the other council, I don't know how the council members feel. I have absolutely no problem with these projects. Uh, if you come to, if you'd come to the council with a, with a agenda item says reconsider safety projects in light of new, new budget numbers. Then that would've been fine. It just seems to me this was not a correct way. Uh, actually an unfair way to go about doing it. I don't have a problem with these projects. I don't have a problem moving forward. I just didn't like the way this was being done. So, I mean, you may, you may, Mr. Mayor, you may wanna just check and see what the council thinks. Maybe they can just vote it up, item J up. I just. I just thought it was an unfair way to. Put some projects in the budget that we didn't approve.
Well, the first thing we probably need to do, do we need a uh, motion? To exclude this item from consent agenda?
Just a mayor, before we do that, could I ask you a question about item F? I don't think it needs. Separate consideration, but I just want clarification about the um. The, the fees for recreation. It's, it's not a huge budget item, but um, I've had some. Conversation with people in the community about this. And um, changing our budget, budget ordinance to add fees to citizens, I think is something that we should discuss in a public forum. Um, it adds fees for playing volleyball at the sand volleyball lot. And I've had a lot of, I've had several contacts from people in the community about expanding our capacity for sand volleyball. But um, that's something for the next budget session, um, expanding courts. But I do think that if we're gonna start charging fees, we need to be really clear to the public about. When our recreational facilities are available for everybody to use. And when they need to pay a fee to use them. I mean, there are, I guess that if you. Rent the tennis court, you pay the fee. If you rent the sandlot, you're gonna now pay the fee if we pass this. But if it's a Tuesday morning and I wanna go with my granddaughter to the sandlot, I should be able to play on the sandlot without having to pay, without having to pay. Fifteen dollars to use it. So there are, um, we have a lot of wonderful facilities in the city of Meven and they should be available to everybody to use. As freely as possible. So I just want clarification about that policy, please.
Hey, did we do have a slide we could share in the PowerPoint on that also?
Okay.
Do you want me to do that?
Yes, uh, play that. Let me unshare.
Mr. Bradley, I didn't mean to interrupt your, your conversation about the other item, but this is also on the consent agenda, so. Wanted to make sure it wasn't closed out.
No, I, I've finished though.
I'm trying to unshare. Bear with me. Having trouble finding it.
Sharing is good, David.
I gotta uh, get my screen back. I feel like I know what Kirk feels like now. Okay, share screen.
I'll share it for you, David.
Oh, thank you.
While you're, while you're doing that, we still can't see your slide, right?
Well, I'll go ahead and start talking about that one, Patty, but the, the reason Aaron uh, brought this to, to me was. Because there, he's had several inquiries about uh, sand volleyball tournaments. And with, with only a, a couple of sand volleyball courts, um. One at the old rec and I. There's one out at uh, Lake Michael Park as well, but it's in not great condition last time I looked at it. Uh, but some people are wanting to have tournaments. And actually, uh, you know, lease, just like, uh, just like Misa uses our soccer fields for certain timeframes. There are people wanting to use the uh, volleyball courts for certain timeframes or tournaments or things like that. So this is really to give. That option out there, um. To, to these folks, um. If, i- if you don't, I mean, that's really the only way somebody could, could put on a, a tournament or. Even if it was just a time where they had a little league. Where they wanted to play three or four games in a row, they, they couldn't do it without reserving it, um. Under this fee schedule. So that was the thinking behind the fee schedule is to allow reservation of. The sand volleyball courts.
Okay, well, and it's consistent with the rest of our policy for renting facilities from the city. And I think that's great. I just wanna make sure y'all know that there's also interest in extending our capacity for sand volleyball. And that's probably something that'll come up at the next budget session. And it may be something that we can do fairly inexpensively and it's also something that's um. A, a sport that doesn't involve direct, close physical contact inside. So it's, it's a healthy thing that people can pursue at this time. So, all right, I just wanted to make my opinions known about that. I'm. I'm finished with that item. Thank you.
I would just add, I, I'm glad you brought that up, Patty, um. I, that volleyball court has been used a lot, um, over the last few months and. I would hate to see it not available for free play still pretty extensively. So I guess I'm wondering too, like. Are there any? I mean, what happens if we? Uh, if, if, what if I wanted to rent the same volleyball court for extended periods of time for multiple days? I mean, is that, a- and, and thus not make it available for free play? I mean, I, I guess. Maybe that's not even a scenario that would ever happen, but I mean fifteen dollars isn't a lot of money, um.
Yeah, Aaron, Aaron would control that. I mean, if, if somebody came in and, and wanted to. Consume all the time for the volleyball courts. Uh, for, you know, a whole weekend, um. He would probably uh, bounce that off of me and Chris and. See if it was an event that was gonna attract a lot of people and we'd make sure to advertise it and let people know the courts would be closed that weekend. Uh, except for maybe nighttime hours or, or whatever. They, wh- whenever that tournament wa- was not using the program. So I, Aaron, Aaron, he, that, he has to do that with Misa and with Eastern High School and all the other. Some of the private schools too, they're juggling fields. Um, we don't have sand volleyball courts to juggle right now. I, I, I don't think they're that expensive and we, uh, you know, the, several of you have mentioned that. We need some more volleyball courts, um, so. We can start looking at the placement of that and seeing what those, they might cost, um, so that we will have some courts to juggle.
Would that be helpful, Dave, uh, David, uh, that there is some courts available for tournaments only and other uh, courts available for public use? Like maybe the Lake Michael ones to be for tournaments? I don't know.
Well, I, I would say you'd wanna leave all your court, courts available for public use. When they're, when they're open. Uh, again, these fees were only established for. To try to attract some of those tournaments and also give those residents. That are wanting uh, some more competitive type events like that. Uh, the ability to put one on, um, so. But. I understand what you're saying, Jill, and I, I think. Uh, if, if we had a. I- if you were attracting a, and a tournament was gonna take a whole Saturday, uh, it may be part of a Sunday, I think. Aaron would try to work it out where there would still be hours available to the public, even during those. Those times. I, I don't, you know, that's the kinda thing we're gonna be working out.
Sure. A- and I guess I just wanna be sure that, that the public understands that they can still play on the courts. For no charge. And I guess if. If it's rented, that takes precedent, but otherwise they're free and open to the public to use. So just wanna be sure that message is also very clear.
This is also, yeah, so if. If somebody really works hard to, to bring twelve people together to play volleyball one night and they're willing to pay fifteen dollars an hour to get that. Time slot. Then they get it with Aaron and then somebody walks up and says, these are, these are public courts. I can play. Well, he needs a vehicle to be able to deal with that other person wanting to hone in on the, somebody else's time, so. You know, they, they deal with a lot of situations like that, uh, where there's competition for the space we. Or the limited space we have to provide, so. All, all of our facilities are free for use. When something's not scheduled on it.
Right.
That's the message you're wanting to convey.
Yeah, i- it is, which brings me to another point because I've gotten to, um. I've been contacted twice today, um, after people saw something that was posted on Facebook, I guess. That says no free play at Park Fields and goes on to say that. Um, there's no free play at the Meven Soccer Complex and Meven Community Park Ball. Fields Monday through Sunday, which is ever, right? And then at the MAC Ball Fields Monday through Thursday. Um, and they were very upset about this move, I guess, that. Um, you can't just go have a kick around soccer game on the turf fields or on the soccer fields at the MAC. And I. I, I know they're in high demand, um, but to me that it's, it's, it's the same. Same idea, right? That I, I wanna be sure that, that our facilities are available to the public.
Yeah, that, and, and they are, um, during this COVID, uh, we are also trying to promote social distancing. Even in sports. And uh, that's why Aaron's placed signs out there saying if you're gonna play sports, you still need to social distance. And, and I'm not saying this is the whole answer to your question, but part of the answer is. Uh, people aren't. We go out there and he has a long talk with folks that weren't social distancing. He leaves. Uh, comes back thirty minutes just to see what's going on and they're right back to, you know. Playing tackle football or whatever they may be doing out there. Um, so I know that's part of what he's trying to deal with. Uh, with these fields, um. So. And I, I, you know, I don't know if Aaron's can get on the line or not. He may can speak better to that issue. I don't know why those specific signs. Uh, yeah, he, he can get on and address that, Jill.
That'd be great, but we can move on to something else while we're waiting.
Okay.
David, one last thing before we leave the consent agenda, five F. I had a note on my budget spreadsheet again. That was the uh, space study need. We'd allocate a hundred and twenty-five and then I put deferred to in-house. Did we do that?
I mean, what, I didn't defer it.
Okay.
The in-house.
We, I think we had that conversation Everett, but I think the final decision was not to go. In that direction, but to hire. An unbiased third party to evaluate.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um. I think what we'll do is back a motion for consent agenda. And then if there's any. And then if there's any discussion to pull out anything, everything will do that then. Um, or do you want to, you want to vote to pull out a particular item, Tim?
Uh, it's up to the council. I just, you know, I, I don't have, I don't have issues with what the, I don't have issues with spending money on those items. My issue was they weren't, they weren't, uh, discussed in conjunction with the, all the other budget items at budget time, or they were discussed and we decided not to do them.
All right, uh, let's have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, could we just, uh, continue them also till Wednesday?
Can we continue them?
Until Wednesday?
Uh, okay, yeah, I would think so.
Unless you're all ready to vote now. If you're ready to vote now on the consent agenda, that's fine. But if there are tweaks that need to be made, why throw it on right now?
Or now is Jeanie not going to give us some more information on 5J?
Yeah, we, uh, you, we can get you more information if you, you would like that, certainly.
Okay.
We would prefer to vote on the consent agenda and remove the 5J if you'd like some more information to talk about it.
Okay, let's have a motion.
Multiple plats waiting to get recorded.
Okay.
I move we, uh, approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5J.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, though, I don't think we need a roll call for that. Do we?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hazard pay, police and fire. Mr. Chief. Yes, sir. Um, I think I have some slides on this as well. Um, probably a couple of months ago, uh, the police department sent over a request for, um, hazard pay, uh, that I initially didn't recommend. Um, and then after several conversations with the chief as well as, uh, some of the officers, uh, rethinking what our police are going through right now, uh, even after telling a lot of y'all that I, I didn't recommend it just verbally, um, I so, I changed my mind. Uh, I think our police are under a lot of stress as well as our fire department. Um, and so, um, you know, I want to, I wanted to present this to, to y'all to see what y'all wanted to do. Um, uh, they've got new expectations. Uh, they're exposed to the virus in a lot of their dealings. Um, they have to put on all this extra protective gear every time they approach someone. That's true of both fire and police. Um, it does represent an extra hazard to their families, uh, cause they, because they're in direct contact with the public. Um, they can contract the virus and take it home to their children, uh, their spouse. Um, so they had requested, uh, a- at that time, a, a one-time payment of $3,500. Uh, I just lost my share, but, um, they requested $3,500 or, uh, 40 hours a week of, uh, vacation or sick pay. Um, we looked at what some other cities, uh, counties may be doing. Um, and, uh, we, we leaned toward the, um, uh, go back to that, uh, first slide, Chris, if you would. We leaned toward a, a one-time payment. Um, but a couple of things some of the police officers said to me, um, that, that changed my mind were those quotes at the bottom of that slides. One said, the main difference, this was in their slideshow, uh, is what happens in this line of work has never had the potential to put everyone in my family and every law enforcement family at risk of serious illness or death. Uh, and then another one said, I believe employees must contact the public on a regular basis, should receive hazard pay because of the risk that the city has deemed viable. And so, you know, we have deemed it a risk to the point where we, uh, platoon people, uh, you know, during the height of the, the coronavirus, uh, we platoon and told them that, uh, you know, you stay home, uh, we, we're going to have this platoon work this, this time. So, uh, we did endorse the idea that the virus is deadly as I, as I think everybody has. You can go on to the next slide, Chris, if you would. Um, so the, the way we, uh, we're proposing, if, if you decide you want to give hazard pay, the, uh, we were proposing to take it from the coronavirus relief funds. Uh, we've received, um, $242,514 from Orange and Alamance County. Um, actually, we, we've already received Orange's amount and we're in application to get Alamance's amount. Um, and then, um, we had submitted a spending plan early on to Alamance County of how we'd spend the funds, Alamance and Orange, and that's how we had originally, this was, um, six weeks to eight weeks ago. We submitted a plan that we thought we'd need 96,000 for personal protective equipment, uh, 40,000 for technology and other types of expenses, uh, and then just payroll cost of 105,000 for administrative leave and the cost of platooning, uh, things like that. Um, so that, that's where we're proposing to get, um, originally, this is where, where we were proposing to, uh, spend the money. Uh, if you go to the next slide, um, I, I, all I would suggest to you is, you know, we did not think it was affordable to give each employee $3,750 or viable to give them 40 hours of leave, uh, per month. Uh, so we, we, we do agree that, uh, maybe a one-time lump sum should be considered. We think it should be the same for all employees and not a percentage basis. Um, it should be only for frontline employees that have direct interaction with the public. And, uh, we felt like police and fire were the, uh, departments that, uh, we knew was having direct, uh, contact. I did send an email out to the rest of the department heads and asked the question, do you have employees, uh, that you feel like are deserving of hazard pay and why? And I didn't receive any, any responses. So, um, uh, this is, if, if, if council wants to make a decision on this, this is sort of the parameters I'd ask you to make it under. Uh, and then the next slide just shows you what the cost would be with, with the FICA and the, uh, retirement benefit that we have to pay with it. Counted 35 police officers that are frontlines, liners, and 27 full-time firemen that are frontliners. And if you do those, these are the, the cost ranges for, the 41 is for 500 person. 82 is for, uh, a thousand and 124 is for 1,500. It's really a range. You could decide to give them 750 or 1,250. Uh, I really want, uh, I, I, I think that the idea of hazard pay is, is an important statement to make to our, our law enforcement and firemen right now with the stresses that they're under. So, uh, I, I lay that at, at, at your feet to s- see what, uh, what you'd like to do with it.
But David, I have no question in my mind that it's warranted, it's needed, and it, it will show support for our, our police and our firemen. They're doing what I think is an excellent job. My only question is, is are, are there, there was no other departments that came back?
That's right. Um, I, I thought, uh, I, I thought inspections would come back, but, uh, again, I, I didn't hear from them. So.
Sanitation, nothing there? I mean, nobody?
No.
Okay.
Do you think there's a chance that will change if we take action on this?
Um, it's possible. Um, I mean, I, I was fairly specific to the department heads is I need to know if, if you have, uh, people that you think are in direct contact, uh, of getting the virus. And, um, you, you know, fee, uh, not FEMA, but, uh, federal law, uh, lumps police, fire, and public works into the category of hazardous duty. Uh, uh, Jeannie, uh, advised us of that, uh, early on. So, um, th- this is, uh, th- this is where we're at right now. It doesn't mean, uh, you can't make, make, uh, different, uh, proposal.
So David, if we went at this, this middle range of 82,890, that's, so am I right? That's a thousand dollars?
Yes, that's a thousand dollars per person, one time.
I was just, um, I just checked with, my daughter's an EMT with Durham County and they've been getting a 10% um, hazard pay bonus since the beginning of the pandemic. And their expectation is, is that it's going to be reimbursed by FEMA. Um, obviously it's a bigger city and county and, um, so they're exposed to all this because they won't contact patients on a daily basis. But I think it's completely reasonable for us to do this thousand dollars now and then see how it unfolds as time goes by. I, I would make that in the form of a motion.
Yeah, I could strongly support that and I would gladly second that. And I would be curious about what FEMA can do, uh, in support of what Patty was talking about, especially EMS.
Well, that's, that's a county thing.
I, I know, but I'm just saying, uh, I was going to complete my sentence was, I believe you have, uh, someone related to you over there in Durham that works for EMS, um, and that was very impactful, you said. So I believe if we can investigate FEMA over here, that'd be wonderful. But I would gladly second a thousand, uh, for our frontline workers.
David, uh, the, I, I assume if we go with the, the thousand, that we'll have enough money from the county. Uh, the other, the other question I had is on the PPE and additional supplies. Uh, I had a conversation with the director of the mu- uh, Historical Museum and told her that, you know, the city's got money, the, so the museum opens up and needs masks and supplies. I assume, uh, that, that could come out of the county proportions as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, uh, we, we have been purchasing masks and supplies. We have plenty to loan to, uh, the museum directly from us that, uh, we, we're going to get reimbursement for from the CRF, uh, coronavirus relief funds. Uh, the application to FEMA, uh, Jeannie can speak, speak to that better. Um, but we are going to be applying to FEMA for some of these supplies. Uh, the rules are different. Uh, she understands it better than I do, but we know we're getting the funds I told you about from, uh, Alamance and Orange County. We don't know how much we're getting from FEMA yet and we don't know when we'll get the FEMA funds. The last, um, event we had where FEMA funds were applied for, we got them two years later. So FEMA doesn't typically move as quickly as they're moving with, um, these, these coronavirus relief funds. And I don't, but I, I think my point, we, with the, uh, $242,000 is additional money, uh, in the budget. So this 82,000, um, we had 105 allotted for payroll type costs. A lot of those payroll type costs were already in the budget because all we're doing was platooning people. So, um, I, I think the, the $1,000 range would, would be very comfortable, uh, for the duty budget. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nope, thanks. And a motion carries, $1,000. I do not need to do a roll, roll call.
That's, that's correct, Mayor, but, uh, Mayor, I do think we need to go back to item 5J, uh, and have y'all continue that till Wednesday night. Uh, it was my understanding you did not vote on that. Is that correct?
We did not. Uh, do we have a motion to continue that to, uh, Wednesday night?
Don't move.
We have a motion with a second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? If not, I, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, that's, that's continued.
Thank you.
Roll calls necessary there. Um, moving on to new street name and signage, Franz Hope.
Ma- Mayor.
Yes.
Before, yeah, that's what I was going to say, David.
I think Aaron is on now.
Yeah.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, hey, it's a pleasure to speak with you tonight. Um, there's a couple of things I can address, um, that were brought up. Um, Patty, I believe it was, um, you brought up the volleyball courts, uh, and the lighting issues, and I just wanted to speak to those really quickly. Um, I met with Ken Coe, who's been contracted to do some fixes, um, at both the community park and the volleyball courts. Um, that work started today. The lights of the volleyball court should be fixed by tomorrow. So just wanted to update you there. Um, the, the one musco light pole at the community park, um, that was directly impacted by the lightning strike is, um, hopefully going to be fixed within the next two weeks. Um, they have a contractor that has to come out and do that work. And, um, we put out some information about this, but just so that all of you know, um, that lightning strike, um, fried some components at the, um, splash pad as well, and we have parts on order, uh, to try to fix that. And, um, hopefully we could open that before the weather turn. But I know there's been a lot of questions about that. We tried to get some things out on social media. Um, as for the, um, posts we put out today about the no free play at Park Field, um, that was, um, a little bit of a miscommunication from the start as far as getting that. Uh, the way that we put that message out there today, uh, we, we should have added times and not just days. And that was, um, something that we addressed in a message within, um, the Facebook post where we were getting some of the messages by, um, some of the citizens that may have reached out to, um, Ms. Auditori today. And we, we added, um, an explanation to that. Um, and really the, the overall, um, reason for this was to be transparent with everybody so that they knew that we were going to start, um, a lot of programming this week. And to, to, uh, Mr. Chief's point, yes, it's one of the most difficult things with starting programs during COVID-19 is if we are expecting certain groups that have already, um, reserved times on fields such as MISA, um, or even a rec program or a, uh, a, a game rental, um, we are asking them to follow certain protocols, which, um, we're not having, uh, the public play, for instance, um, go through those same protocols because we have different people monitoring the, the programs that are going on. Um, so in some cases we have a one-way in and a one-way out and we're testing just the participants. And there's, they're, um, only allowed to bring with, say, one adult for the night. And we have different viewing areas and such. So, um, really at the end of the day, the, the goal was, we want to get this out and be transparent to everybody so that they know and don't show up with, you know, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35 people and expect to have use of those fields because that's what we've seen over the last six months is that if there's an ounce of field available, um, that it's going to try to be used by someone, whether they have a reservation or they don't. And so it was really like a public service announcement to say, hey, we're, we're getting ready to get really busy again. And you haven't seen that over the last six months. Now, we failed to put the times in there. And so we addressed that in a, in a message to everybody to let them know that really it's from about 5:30 to nine o'clock at night, um, where the community park fields will be used and the MAC soccer fields and the baseball softball complex will be used. So, um, tonight we started youth lacrosse, next week we'll start baseball, softball, and lacrosse, all kind of going on at. So tonight we started youth lacrosse. Next week we'll start baseball, softball, and lacrosse, all kind of going on at one time. And then MISA has their rec program finally starting up again. And they have also had their travel program doing as well. So encompassing all that together on the fields that we have, it's gonna be really hard to find open space and do it safely with social distancing and such. So that's why we put this out there. I will say we failed to give the full, the full message firsthand.
Thanks, Erin. Will you be updating that image? I don't know if it's a flyer or.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Auditori. So I, I, this is what I thought about doing an absolute update on that. Is that if we deleted that post, that we also lost all the public comments from it. And I felt that those were necessary to keep so that we weren't essentially erasing everything that people had commented to us about. And that was, that was the first thing we put in our little message was that we appreciate the feedback and the conversation. We realized that we, we failed in a sense to give the full story. But I, I, I didn't think that deleting the posts would be the right way to go about that. And, and we could do another one if, if needed. But, but most of the people who commented on the post gave us feedback as well in the comment section. And, and also, the last thing. You mentioned the volleyball courts and wrecking them and such. And really, as, as Mr. Cheek explained, what we were, are, what we're trying to accomplish here is if, if you and fifteen year friends said, well, hey, we want to have a couple of games Friday night from six to eight o'clock. And, and all fifteen of you show up, and then there's already fifteen people there without having a reservation. Then they would essentially have to say, well, I guess we'll have to all go back home. And so I just want to give that opportunity for them to have a set time where they can come in and, and know that they'll show up and be able to use the court. So as far as free play, anytime that we don't have anything scheduled for rental or reservation, we absolutely want the citizens to be able to use all the facilities that we have. Again, this was, this was more of a, a public service announcement to let people know that it's gonna start getting busy again.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I apologize for the hat.
All right, let's go to the new straight naming, Franz Hope.
Everett, can you still hear us okay? Mr. Green. I just spoke with him and he said he could hear us, but I just want to make sure he can speak to us.
I know my iPad died. I'm on a landline now.
I think he has similar experience.
Should we take a five minute break while we try and get him back online since we're at three hours and twenty-two minutes?
Oh, man, Sean, you're a newbie. We've had much longer meetings than this.
So take care of this technical issue. No?
Everett, can you hear us?
Ask him to unmute.
Can you unmute there, Everett?
No. It only gives me the option just to ask him. It won't allow me to unmute him.
Hey, how about I just put you on my speakerphone and let's see if that works? Well, you need to be able to speak.
Okay, you can hear me on my phone.
That's perfect.
All right.
All right, you're back with us.
Okay.
All right, sorry for the interruption, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Franz, you ready? Franz here tonight. Got unmuted, Franz.
Chris, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that. We've got two devices going. I hope everybody's doing okay tonight. What you have before you is an exhibit map. Pretty much of one nineteen from the ramps to where Third Street potentially being named Third Street Extension, South Third Street Extension will tie on to one nineteen north. We have a couple of names, streets that need to be named. We show those in light purple or lavender. And then we have several sign locations that we would like to install new signs on. We do have a very vast intersection with the proposed South Fifth Street Extension in one nineteen. And we thought about hanging those signs actually on the signal cable, cable wires that are available. It's been discussed with DOT and, and they are okay with that, if that's what council chooses to do. One of the goals that we had in naming the streets or renaming or not naming or unchanging or changing streets was to limit the number of addresses that would need to be changed. If you look at the top, it's South Third Street Extension, north of the post office. There are no new driveways on that road. So there will need to be no new, new addresses on that road. When you look at South Fifth Street. All of those are still addressed as South Fifth Street all the way to the ramps. When you look at South Fifth Street Extension Proposed. Katie Harper with Alamance County GIS analyst, who does all the addressing for the county and city. Has indicated there are at least four properties that would need an address, trains three of them to the east of one nineteen and one of them to the west. There may be some other parcels that she didn't count because they didn't have driveways that actually connect to the proposed South Fifth Street Extension. To complicate matters a little bit. In discussing with Katie, the South Third Street Extension name. While it is signed at Holmes Road as South Third Street Extension and signed at Corporate Park Drive as South Third Street Extension. It actually doesn't start until the next road to the west, which is Maple Lane. And then from there to Gibson Road, where it then changes over to Stone Street Extension. That is really South Third Street Extension. So the actual sign that you see at Maple Lane says South Third Street and Maple Lane. Because it is where the location is signed to the right, going to the east, it is South Third Street. So I apologize for not having that correct on the map. I don't know if that changes our thinking. We've had several thoughts in developing this map. Including taking South Third Street, South, South Third Street Extension all the way to one nineteen. Doing some directional signage there, and then the same thing at the north, doing some directional signage. As you are aware, and as I noted in the agenda, the DOT does their directional signage as well. And did not want to have competing signage as possible, but that may be the case where we need to, need to do it anyway. So that's what we've proposed as a staff. We talked about it, you know, Chief Lewis had input, Mr. Rollins had input. DOT is in the TRC meeting as well as Katie Harper. Be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Chris had provided me a, a public comment on this item earlier. And I don't know if y'all want to allow opportunity for that now, or if you want to discuss what I've just gone over with you first.
Well, Franz, I think that we all, we all got that public comment, I think, from Mr. Colin Canal. And when I read through it, I completely understood his position. But, you know, Third Street Extension, starting by the post office, and then you go down one nineteen, and then you get on South Fifth Street Extension, and then you get back on Third Street Extension. I think, you know, I've been in Atlanta where everything is named Peachtree something. You know, Avenue, Drive, Street, and you can't figure out where you are. I think that's super confusing to have Third Street Extension not be a through street that you can actually go through on. That you're gonna, or I, I think that we might need to name it something completely different. Just because it's gonna be super confusing and, you know, for, for emergency services, which is the most important thing. But also for deliveries and for people who are visiting their community, will need to be able to find their way.
It, it seems to me, and, and I read the comments and I, I, it seems to me that the simplest resolution or the issue is Third Street Extension doesn't connect with Third Street Extension. There's a, there's a block of Fifth Street Extension in the center. So it seems to me that there's no need to continue Fifth Street Extension past the one nineteen bypass. So why not just call that little section of Fifth Street Extension west of the bypass, Third Street Extension? And then they take a left on the Parkway and then turn right, they're still continuing on Third Street Extension.
That might work.
I mean, there's, there's no way it's gonna, I mean, unless you rename Third Street Extension all the way out, which that seems to be unfair to a lot of people. But the only, the only thing is you get on the bypass for a short time and you put a, you put a sign there at the, where Third Street Extension comes up to the bypass. That Third Street Extension goes left, and then down at the next intersection, you put Third Street Extension goes right. And you don't have that little Fifth Street Extension, which didn't seem necessary to carry that forward anyway. It's not going anywhere.
Mr. Bradley, I, I hear you and Ms. Phillips both. I think I overwhelmed some of the staff with directional signage, and if I had a little simpler map at the time, they may have saw that, just like you see it, both of you.
Franz, you mentioned, though, that Third Street Extension doesn't start until Maple. Is, is there a way to actually just start Third Street Extension at one nineteen going west the whole way? I mean.
Yes, I spoke with Ms. Harper about it, and she said, and actually, it's, she says it's a hodgepodge out there. There's no doubt. I mean, there are properties that are addressed as South Third Street past Maple. And there are, a majority of them are addressed as South Third Street Extension, but there are some. So, and then you go on Google, and there's some that are in this inner area that are labeled South Third Street, and the adjoining pieces, the address is labeled as South Third Street Extension. She said technically, we would probably should rename South Third Street between Maple. And, and if, if we follow what Ms. Phillips and Mr. Bradley says, and even, even the citizen that had mentioned taking it all the way to the one nineteen. If we follow that, all that probably should be renamed to, to South Third Street Extension going west, as you just said, as Auditori.
Well, that, that's what I would suggest. Change that one little Fifth Street Extension, change it to Third Street Extension, make Third Street Extension all the way out from one nineteen.
And add, and add the necessary directional signage.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
And then the section from one nineteen on that new section of South Fifth Street, that, just that two blocks or whatever is called Fifth Street Extension. So. The new section of South Fifth Street is called the South Fifth Street Extension.
Yes, from one nineteen going east until it runs back into South Fifth Street.
Okay.
Just so I heard this right, so if I'm going south on one nineteen, I'm gonna see an exit for South Third Street Extension. I go down another, what, mile maybe? I'm gonna see another exit for South Third Street Extension and South Fifth Street Extension. Is that correct? Ish.
I would say you are correct.
I mean, I, I know that, I know that renaming a street like entirely is, is problematic and, and burdensome to people who live on it. But it does happen, like it's not unprecedented. And I wonder, I mean, maybe this is the time to just say, all right, we're gonna scrap the South Third Street Extension name and, and rename that street to Gibson Road. I don't know. In the long run, it might be easier.
So, Ms. Auditori, which section would you rename? What part do we change?
From one nineteen, where you see the orange dots on the map, to Gibson Road.
Oh, all of that.
Renamed that one?
I, I don't have a name proposal. I mean, Auditori Lane has a nice ring. Not really. I don't like things named after people.
I think that we end up in dangerous territory when we start naming roads or buildings or things after people.
Oh, I totally agree, Patty. I was, I, you know, I don't like naming things after people. I totally agree. But we could come up with a lovely name, you know.
Maple Oak Elm.
Right, something really.
Sycamore.
Yeah.
Lovely Lane.
Lovely. That's a good one.
Yes, for continuity's sake, it would be Stone Street Extension if we continue straight west.
So that's, is that a Har River town name?
Is, that, if you cross over Gibson, that's what, that's what you're looking at across the street from Third, South Third Street Extension.
One of our early iterations did exactly what was mentioned is stopping South Fifth Street Extension at one nineteen. And I think that's the least disruptive for everybody. If you're on one nineteen, you do see a sign that takes you on what you have always in the past thought was South Third Street or South Third Street Extension.
Okay.
I think that the least disruption for the people who live there and people who are driving is the optimal solution.
I'm just not sure those are, those are the same thing, Patty, you know.
That might be true. Mr. Bradley, do you have a suggestion?
My, my, I still think the simplest thing is to change this, that little short section of South Fifth Street or Fifth Street Extension between the orange dot and the, where it merges with, with Third Street Extension. Changing that to Third Street Extension. I mean, there's a, there's a million places in North Carolina where you go by one street that says eighty-seven, Highway eighty-seven, and you go two exits down and it says Highway eighty-seven. Because the two were broken and connected at some point, well, like, for example, on, on one down near Sanford. There are just multiple examples of that. So people coming in can turn left on Third Street Extension or go down, turn right on it, depending on what the number of their address are looking for. I, I guess I don't see that too, it's too problematic, but maybe I depend too much on signs and, and the wave on my stuff. But that seems the simplest to change that one section to. But that seems the simplest, to change that one section to South Third Street and then you have South Fifth Street dead ending at 119 bypass, and Third Street Extension sort of split by the little section of, of the, of the bypass.
There's some big industries out there, west, west on South Third Street Extension, so I would imagine if that were to be renamed, there'd be some significant logistical issues with those companies. I can support, keep it simple.
Yeah, I, I don't have a strong opinion, but I think it'd be I don't have a strong opinion about it.
Is, is Mr. Cannell, um, online to speak tonight, or do you have his remarks, Ms. Stephanie?
I believe he's still been waiting, um, online to speak.
Y'all want to hear?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Please make him wait this long.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd first like to thank Mr. Cheek and Ms. Shaw for giving me the opportunity to, uh, talk to the, to the council tonight. I don't have much to say, it seems like pretty much everybody agrees with me, or I agree with everyone. So, uh, the only thing that I would add here, I've been doing a little bit of research on renaming of roads, and it is possible to give a road two names. Um, if you think about, uh, in New York, there's plenty of streets that, you know, Sixth Avenue is also Avenue of the Americas. There's lots of streets that have two names there. And so if the council did choose in the future uh, to rename South Third Street Extension because it no longer connects with South Third Street, no longer has any relation to that road, you could give it an alternate name, and, and it would continue to have both names, and it would be, mail would be addressable and deliverable on both names. So I just wanted to clarify that it, it doesn't have to be a, a hard switch over, if that were something that the council decided to do in the future, but certainly I am, I'm perfectly happy with, uh, what, uh, Ms. Bradley, um, and others have put forward is to simply extend Third Street Extension all the way east to 119 and put some directional signage there and, and call it a day and move on to, to more important issues. Uh, that's about it for me, thank you.
Appreciate your comments, they were very, they were spot on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Colin.
Uh, you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it's, discussion's over, let's, uh, let's get a motion.
I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, accept this map with one exception, and that is to change the, uh, uh, entire road, South Fifth Street Extension, west of the bypass to Third Street Extension, causing South Fifth Street Extension to dead end at the bypass, or not dead end, but end.
Second.
And, and put appropriate signs for left turn at the Third Street and right turn at Third Street.
Alright, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion?
So can I just clarify that it will be South Third Street Extension?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okie doke.
Okie doke.
Okie doke. It gets late, guys. The, uh, last, or next to last, post-listing session discussion. Mayor Hooks, I would like to defer that to, uh, Mr. Cheek.
This item was put on there at, uh, council's request, uh, to discuss uh, what you heard at the listing session and determine, uh, there's any directives to staff or any other items you'd like to discuss uh, as relates to that listing session.
Mr. Mayor, I, I mean, I, I asked David a couple of weeks ago, I thought it was time that we moved on with some of the recommendations that were being made. I think a lot of others have the same thoughts. Uh, and I would, I would like to, the, the biggest issue that came forward, and it seems to, seems to me this be the best move uh, or the most gain we can get out of one move, and that would be to go ahead and move forward with creating a, a racial diversity, a racial, uh, inclusion, racial diversity inclusion committee, but ask, ask, ask staff, uh, to take some comments from council members tonight or in between, and come back at the October meeting with a committee structure, appointment, uh, purpose, uh, direction, et cetera, et cetera. I know Sean's put some comments together on this, I know, I know, uh, Patty's had some comments about it, so I mean, we can all make, uh, we can all make comments to, to David or Chris and let them know what our thoughts are. I was sort of looking like have a break Meven into four quadrants, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest, and have an inside and outside individual from each of those quadrants and uh, would, then they apply for, uh, membership on the, on the committee with, with us looking primarily for racial diversity. Uh, and what that, what the purpose that committee would be to, and maybe have a member at large, uh, there's a multiple way you can come up, have maybe have, uh, uh, have that committee's responsibility to be to, uh, provide us with community comments, to provide us with solutions, to provide us with that ideas, to let us know when there are issues of concern or perception that we're not aware of, uh, that we can hand to the committee and say, this has been brought forward, can you make some suggestions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I think based on the comments at the, at the, uh, public hearing, that the smartest move, and the best move we can make now is move forward with that uh, committee, whatever, I guess would be the best way to call it, uh. And whether or not the chair is appointed by us, or the chair is elected by the committee, blah, 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 uh, David and staff can put together some ideas that we can hammer out with community, with commit, with, uh, community input next, next meeting. I think we all know what we want to have done, there's just many ways to put it together. And we, we can all discuss that over time.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you very much for that. I think that we really are in a position right now where we can move forward with good relationships with all of our neighbors and everybody around us, and make sure that all of our policies and planning documents and everything else that we utilize is, um, they're inequitable. That's what we should be doing, and I think that we're in a position to do that now. So, I think that if we can each individually, or staff members try to find best practices in the community, or the state, or even outside the state. I know that what Mr. Ewing proposed to us was from Durham, which is 275,000 people, and we're 20,000 people, or not yet. So that might not be the perfect fit, but I think that there are other models out there, and there are other communities around the country that are doing the work to make sure that our policies are equitable and fair, and that's what all of us want, so, um, let's continue to, um, accumulate information, get, get information from everybody we can, and, um, maybe next month, or, you know, down the road, we can figure out how to move forward and as we evaluate all of our plans, make sure that we're doing them in the best way.
Yeah.
Go, go.
Well, I was, I, the, the last point, I, I agree, the last point you made, Patty, I think, I, I mean, I, I was honestly disappointed with the, um, with the level of participation or lack of participation at the town hall meeting.
Absolutely.
And it feels a little heavy-handed to, um, to make decisions about a, um, diversity equity committee, um, without some more community input. I, and I, I don't know how to get that, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. Maybe this isn't the best forum for it, maybe that's why more people didn't show up, I'm not sure. But I just want to be sure that we get, um, more community input, maybe with another forum. Maybe we wait till we can go live, I don't know. In, informing whatever committee, um, emerges from these conversations, um, I, I don't know, I just, it, it feels a little it makes me uncomfortable to, to create a committee without more community input, um, about what it should look like.
Jill, I agree with you. What would you think about getting the Piedmont Triad Regional Council to do a study on the communities that are on the edge of Meven, so the sewer, what the perceived racial, uh, inequities are, the racial bias, things of that sort? And then come back to us, uh. There, there's a perception that, you know, like, that like we ran sewer out 119 and stopped at White Level. Well, actually, the developers of Mill Creek ran it out there and, and paid for it. We didn't stop it there, it stopped there. So some of these perceptions that we're, we're hearing, or things that you've heard, there are lots of them, I think we need to clear those up first.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I would love, I don't know if, if it's, if it's, um, Piedmont Triad or, or staff, but I mean, if we could do a study of, um, infrastructure needs in communities that have been historically overlooked, I think that would be a great step in the right direction as well.
The big reasons with this committee too, will be getting citizen feedback, and that's really should be the crux of this, we need our citizen feedback, and I love Tim's idea of the quadrant idea. We'll be focusing on folks over here, over there, up there, up there. I think that's a great way to make sure we are getting some really, really good feedback from our own citizens. I think we can work in parallel with, uh, Piedmont Triad, and I think, I think that's a great idea. But I really hope we focus on this committee and we can bring more voices to the table here and there. It's, it's time, we're overdue for this.
Yeah, but Sean, Patty, and Jill both said they were disappointed in the turnout and the response we had from at the town hall meeting from people, so, you know, I don't know that we're hearing from the people, the people we would like to hear from, or as many as we would like to hear from. So I think we're going to have to go out and, and, and say to them, what, you know, knock on their door, say what, what, tell us what you think. I don't think, how many people do we have at the town hall meeting?
We have four, we have four every, but I think that, I think it's also really important for us to look at all of the work that has been done in the past, as far as applying for community development block grants, and all of the money that's been spent on water and sewer, um, everywhere. And, and just seeing what has been done and what hasn't been done, and where we can go from here, because annexation laws have changed, and there are a lot of different things that are very, and we also grown, we've grown a lot. We have extended water and sewer to a lot of places. So I think if we had a new annexation study, if we had I think that there are a lot of opportunities for us as a city to expand our services, but most importantly, we need to make sure that everybody who considers themselves a citizen of Meven is afforded the same opportunities every other person who considers themselves.
Well, that goes without saying. Um, Sean?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I certainly don't want it to appear heavy-handed. My, 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 uh, thoughts were that if we put a document together and brought it back to the city council meeting, it, it, it seems like we never hear from people until the plane's getting ready to touchdown. And maybe if we put a document together, we advertise it quite heavily, uh, then, then those people that are interested could come and offer input. I don't, I don't want to fault the issue, it just seems to me that the, the comment tonight from the, from the minister we had speak, the, some people have contacted me that we need, wouldn't, if people aren't comfortable talking to us, maybe a committee uh, that was, that was racially diverse, they would feel comfortable talking to. We should, we should leave it, we should leave, leave the committee as the committee. I mean, let them do their work, uh, and bring, bring information to us, but I, I certainly, I, I don't want to ram this down anybody's throat, but I I'm kind of like, it's time to, to move forward. I don't mind the, the coun- council doing a study. Uh, I think those of us who's been around five or 10 years are going to know exactly what they're going to say as far as sewer and water projects, but once we have that study, how we implement it, and how we get the community's buy-in, and et cetera, et cetera. It seems to me this committee would be a, a strength to us. Uh, but Jill, I certainly don't want to be heavy-handed, I was thinking that when we brought it back, we'd get more input from the, from the public, because I would see something in writing that.
I think that's a good point, Tim. Yeah.
And actually, in a public hearing, um, which begs the question, I have, um, opened some dialogue
with the, uh, West End revitalization thing, so do you, do you, you know, I serve at the pleasure of the council, so what is the council's pleasure, or what would y'all direct me to do, uh, for future meetings, do we take, does this take the place of this, or, or, uh, I need some direction from the council?
I think it's, I think it's incumbent on us to meet with any community. Now, any community that has an association, organization, uh, but I, I don't, I don't see, I don't see the, WERA, West End Revitalization, so I don't see them fitting into this role, for two reasons. We didn't appoint them. Uh, they, they weren't, it wasn't advertised citywide. People didn't have the opportunity to apply to the city. And I think if we're going to start something, it needs to be a city committee that, of people that have come to the city and say, I want to participate, I want to provide information. There's nothing wrong with meeting with WERA or, and WERA, if, after this committee is appointed, meeting with them and providing input, but I think, I think the, this racial diversity needs to start with us. It's our issues, it's the things we need to resolve, so we need to, we need to take the bull by the horn, so to speak, and get it moving, get it going. That's just my opinion, Mr. Mayor.
I want to engage with everybody also. I want to engage with everybody who is interested in what's happening with the city of Meven. But I also want to make sure that we're all on equal footing, and that we all agree on the same facts as we feller. I think that's a really important thing, and um, I do agree that there have been things in the past that have not been pleasant. But I think that it's time for us to figure out how we move forward in a way that is community-oriented, and that we are all working together towards the same end. And, um, I think that if you have a meeting where there's misrepresentation afterwards, that's not moving towards a good goal. So, I'm very, um, committed to making sure that the city of Meven is on the right side of being a good partner, of making sure everybody has adequate facilities. But I am not going to participate in a program where we're going to be scared by somebody who's spreading things that are not true.
Okay.
I just went there, sorry, y'all.
Was that the direction you were looking for, Ed? Good?
Uh, yeah. So, so, um, I mean, I have, I, I, I was able to, uh, ask some people to get up with, and start this committee, uh, this, this, not committee, this, uh, conversation. It was meant to open dialogue and to, and to create a dialogue with, uh, with a group that, uh, had not had that with the city of Meven. And I found it quite enlightening, and actually, you know, was looking, you know, looking for another meeting, uh, in the near future. I'm not sure how we advance that, I would like to, but I don't know how you advance it. Do we advance it Zoom, or do we advance it, uh, what's the plans for the second meeting, uh, David?
Right now, the, the only plans are that we were going to have a second meeting. It was planned tentatively for this coming Friday. I had sent, uh, Omega a question, he sent back an answer and was asking for confirmation of that meeting for this Friday.
I was just going to say, uh, based on the correspondence I reviewed after your last meeting, uh, there, it seemed to me that, uh, immediately boundaries have been overstipped. Number one, the city council in Meven didn't appoint a task force. Uh, and certainly didn't appoint a task force that consisted of one community organization to control, to, to discuss this issue, so uh, meeting with a community organization as mayor or a council member, I think is all of our responsibilities. Meeting officially as a representative of the city to discuss at the task force level issues, that's not what I had, would have in mind for your meetings with WERA or any other community. I think it's fine to sit down with and discuss issues or input they may have and provide answers as best you can, but, uh, task force, that just and, and then of course, the, the, the steady stream of accusations that continues to come from that group that I find offensive, but maybe no one else does, but that's my opinion to clear it up.
Sounds like, uh, we should be going, uh, pursuing this next meeting, but going in there, listening, finding out what other, uh, properties may be having issues that we may be for one reason or another overlooking. Listen to what the community has to say. Does that sound like a pretty good, uh, foundation there to build on the next meeting?
Are you gonna have the, a, a, a broad enough spectrum of people there other than who you had at the first, and I don't see any new communities or people coming into this except for the people that were at the last meeting? Is that not a true statement, Mr. Hooks?
I, I, you know, I don't know who, I don't know who's gonna be invited in the next meeting. Um, you know, I know I'm invited, and I know Omega's invited. Other than that, I don't know who else will be there. Um.
I just want to make sure that what comes out of the meeting is an accurate representation of what was said and that um, maybe recording the meeting or having somebody from staff there to take minutes, because I, I, I just don't know that the email that came out to a lot of people who are not actually related to the city was representative of what actually happened at the meeting, and I want to make sure that we're not getting thrown under the bus when we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to do the right thing and make the situation better, not worse.
Well, and I think a, a conversation that Ed has with Western Revitalization Association is, is, is one thing, and the committee that we talked about earlier is something very different and, and, and while staff, I see staff being involved in that committee that we talked about earlier, the conversation with Wera, Wera can be a conversation that Ed facilitates or any of us can, but I don't see staff's role in that necessarily, because that's not a committee, so to speak, that's going to be um, guiding or, or um, making policy recommendations for, I mean, I guess they could, but that, we're, we're not charging them with that, right?
Well put.
Well said.
Well put.
We're in a really difficult time right now, and I think that all of us are struggling with our roles and our responsibility, and every one of us who's been elected to represent the city of Meven wants to do what is best for the city of Meven and everybody who was local around us, all of the people who call themselves Mevenites and maybe inside or outside of the city, what it's. So having a constructive conversation about that is what we're seeking. We are not seeking to have some sort of adversarial relationship with anybody. So you need water and sewer. Let's figure out how we can do it. Let's figure out what is within the realm of possibility, but don't call us names.
Well, I find, I find his um, his task force uh, and all, all that he's going after, uh, you know, that has to be obviously discussed by the city council and whether we support that or not. But I mean, I'll be, I, I, I found it quite enlightening. I did find it cumbersome in that everybody was wearing masks, and I find it difficult to uh, to hear um, you know, conversations, so um, um, if, if we don't make some changes, uh, I will, I probably will ask a council member to take my, take, to take my place. Um, so um, um, you know, and I think uh, we can rotate council people. We can, we can introduce them to different, you know, do, all of us. Uh, you know, we need to make it, I, 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 I like the idea uh, that there is some dialogue and some, and some um, and some, and some discussions that hopefully can be, um, can, something good can come out of this. Um, so I'll proceed. Uh, we'll discuss whether Friday afternoon's good for me or not later on tomorrow, and um, we'll go from there, and um, um, I just want to make sure the council, because I don't want, I don't want uh, I don't want the, the council, uh, you know, um, anyway, not knowing this is the, this is where we're headed, and I, I serve at y'all's pleasure, so uh, uh, so having said that, any other, any other discussions?
Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to sort of move this thing forward and re- in respecting Jill's comments about the the uh, not, not move, not ramming anything or not moving too fast or, uh, but what I would like to do is ask staff to um, make a motion that we ask staff to review some policies, uh, committees similar in size to Meven, even, even, even larger, uh, like Sean suggests, City Durham's, and put together uh, a package or a committee proposal, and then we advertise it at the next meeting as a public hearing for discussion. And we widespread that, and if, if we're not comfortable at the end of next, the next meeting with how we've got the committee developed, then we move it forward to the November meeting until we get it like we feel the community will support, but it gives us the direction that we need to, and the assistance we need in in making sure that we offer everyone the same opportunities. So I'll, I'll put that on the floor of the motion.
I'll second that.
I think that's a great idea, Tim. Thanks.
Okay, uh, do we need a motion for this?
You just made it. I seconded.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
As I look at my calendar, it's worth a week late already this month. I mean, David Lawson.
Three weeks.
That's kind of a tight schedule to get back at the October meeting. Could we shoot?
About November.
How about November?
That, that's, that's fine. I, I'm sure, I'm sure there's, are some examples out there, but if you need to go to November, that's fine. I would like it to come out to the point where we have a document that the public can review before the meeting and we can take input, and hopefully more people will speak than we had at our other one, but those that have already asked and pushed this, that they, they, they let us know if they see it, it's the same, what they were envisioning.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one, just because of uh, staff bandwidth is the big reason for pushing out to November?
What did you say, Sean?
You were breaking my. Hopefully this is okay. Uh, because of staff bandwidth, that's the reason to push it out to November.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Any further, any further additional items or anything tonight, anyone?
Can I, can I just ask for some clarification as far as um, the working with Wera? Um, I heard several different things. Um, I heard you wanted staff to keep minutes. I heard staff didn't need to be involved. I, I'm, I'm confused as to how you want us to proceed with working on setting up this, are we gonna continue to uh, you know, continue the conversation? And how involved do you want staff to be with that conversation? Directly at, at Wera task force meetings?
Ed, I would think that, I mean, I would think that Ed would have a meeting next Friday or some point with them and try to establish some, 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 some goals and objectives that they can come back to staff with. I don't see staff there. I, I see I see the city, as, as, as Tim and everybody said, city council is, is going to try to, to bring this thing together to give directions to people and, and, and a committee. Uh, but I, you know, stat, staff, staff's got a lot going on right now. Uh, there, there's, there's, there's situations affecting y'all as well as affecting everybody, so uh, I'd like to see that the, I'd like for the meeting to be recorded, since Ed came here, we need to find out what happened.
Well, Tim made a good point. I mean, the task force has not been something that we commissioned or that we appointed. It's, it's, it's the Wera's task force. Um, I don't see what role staff really has with Wera's task force. I think that's a a relationship that we or Ed can foster with them if so desired, but otherwise, I don't, I don't see the role that staff has with them at this time.
Well, I, I agree with what Jill said, and I'd also like to see if um, they would like to come to the council with specific recommendations that we might be able to enact. Something, some, some kind of concrete action that they would like to see happen, um, a specific. So.
Do we need a facilitator to uh, clear up staff bandwidth?
No.
To sort of clear up what? You broke up again, Sean, to clear up what?
If I'm bad.
Did he go home?
What kind of facilitator?
Okay.
There you go. Yeah, yeah. Would it be helpful if we got, yeah, a facilitator party to help clear up the staff bandwidth?
My, my, yeah, my point was this. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't appoint a task force. Where did the task force come from? The mayor met with a, an outside group from a, from a community, just that, that, that happens occasionally. I, my, my, my position would be, Ed, that your response to where it would be, hey, you guys, you guys moved this thing into a task force. That wasn't the intent. We met with you to discuss some, some issues of common concern. We're moving forward with this committee. It's gonna be a committee of the city. You can work with them. You can provide ideas to us, but we didn't appoint a task force. We didn't agree to a task force, and all of a sudden, we just started calling one, and we're not gonna lend uh, official capacity to that, either that or the comments coming out of the task force. We'll take the input just like we would from any community group.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, that the task force did ask them to provide them some maps as well as the new uh, annexation laws, which we're glad to provide that information, uh, even make presentations to them on that, but um, I think the clarity of being a part of the committee is uh, understood.
Well, I wanted to create, I wanted to create discussion. I wanted to create a dialogue, uh, and we've done that, so I just want to know if we want to, you know, how it continue. I know I've gotten direction, uh, and I appreciate that, and um, we'll have some discussions tomorrow about when we're gonna actually have the meeting and how we're gonna, how we're gonna do it. Uh, if it's, if it's still, anyway, we won't go into that. Uh, thank you, guys. Thank you for tonight. Great job. Any other uh, items to come before the council?
Thank you, Ed, for your leadership.
Thank you. If not, we stand adjourned. Good night, guys.
Good night.
Night.
Night, John Boy.
Good night, Mary Ellen.